Welcome, everyone. We'll continue our meeting. Mr. Splendario, do we have a report from closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Council convened in closed session to discuss an item of labor negotiations as described in the agenda. Council received information and provided direction, and there's no reportable action.
Thank you, sir. So I will now call the meeting to order, the regular meeting for Tuesday, January 17, 2023. First, we'll do roll call.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Yeah.
Councilmember Papino?
Here.
Councilmember Farmer?
Here.
Councilmember Lozano?
Here.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Here. Next, we'll have a silent prayer followed by the flag salute. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with its stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next is a replay statement. Madam Clerk?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.zaccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, January 20 at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, January 21 at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14.
Thank you. Next is item F, Agenda Approvals and Deletions, additions and/or deletions for regular calendar items. Does any of the council members like to add or delete something from the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to G, Presentations. First item is a proclamation for Supervisor Don Natoli by the city manager.
Well, Don, thank you so much for joining us here tonight. And the City of Galt would like to present you with a proclamation. And there are a number of wheresses here, so I'm gonna condense if that's okay.
It's okay to me.
But I wanted to let everybody know that Don's public service began when he was elected to the Galt High School Board of Trustees in 1977. And while he was still attending Sacramento State and it continued until 1994. There are a lot of accolades here in the wheress, but I wanted to highlight a couple of things. And I've been your city manager for about two and a half years now. And this is the couple of statements that really got to me, that Don is recognized as one of the hardest-working elected officials by many of his peers and public agency staff. He is well-respected by constituents and businesses in the district and throughout Sacramento County. And Don's approach to all of his interactions reflect his commitment to respecting every constituent's right to be fully heard and their concerns and opinions considered respectfully. And so I'm gonna jump down to now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Galt, California, that Donald William Natoli is commended for his dedication, leadership, and accomplishments during his time with the Galt, City of Galt, and within the 5th District of Sacramento County. And Supervisor Natoli, thank you so much.
Okay. Well, thank you, Lorenzo, and Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, certainly my fellow Galtonians and those who are in the audience this evening. It's a real pleasure to be able to be here at home and to come before this very austere body to have this proclamation put into the record. I will just say it has been my honor and privilege to have served this community in one capacity or the other, as the city manager pointed out, for now over 45 years. And it's only been through the support and certainly the work of those that I've had the opportunity to work with, including members of this council. In 1978, I had the opportunity to serve on this council for just a little over a year. And learned a lot, certainly not only about my community and certainly city government, but certainly in serving on the school board, and then having had the great honor and privilege of having represented people of this community, the people of the 5th District and Sacramento County for now 28 full years. And I'll just tell you that retirement is gonna take a little adjusting to get used to. But I will say for those of you that I know, many of you here in the audience, and again, have been friends of me and my family, and certainly longtime associates, that you'll probably have a chance to see me around town a little more often than you have in the last 40 years or so, since obviously a lot of my focus has been taken throughout the district. But I'm proud to have been born and raised here in this community, to certainly have served this community and many others throughout the county of Sacramento in many different capacities. But it's only been through the, I think, the goodness and the blessings I've received, certainly as a member of this community, but from family and friends and the supportive people that I've had the opportunity to do that. And so I'm very honored to receive this, and I'll add this to the collection of things. I gotta figure out where I'm gonna hang these things. But again, the words mean a lot, and I want to say thank you. I had an opportunity a little over a week ago, certainly some of the council members and your city manager joined me at an open house. It was a very rainy day, and I know some of the audience braved the weather as well. But I said to my successor, Supervisor Hume, I feel a little bad about leaving things in the state of the condition they were with all the weather and the storms and the flooding and so forth. But that's one of the lessons that comes with public service. And again, I commend each of you, certainly my colleagues on this body, and certainly your city manager, your city staff, and certainly the people of this community, who again have shown me their love and support and certainly respect over the many years I've had a chance to serve. So I look forward to retirement and hopefully having the opportunity to share some of what I've learned along the way in different ways, but certainly in different capacity than I've served in the last 28 years. So thank you so very much.
So we're gonna take pictures with...
Oh, that's very kind. She's earned them.
So while we're still here, would any of my council members like to say a couple of words?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a very short comment about Don Natoli. Thank you, Don, for coming tonight to the council meeting. Thank you for your service. There are so many great things to say about him. And you've done excellent love to this community during his 44 years of public service, including Sacramento area. You are someone I highly admire and respect. Thank you for your dedication and commitment to serving. I wish you happy retirement, and I'm sure we will see you around in this community. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not gonna go into, we all know all the great work you've done. I just want to say thank you for all the times that I would text you or call, and you would get right back to me, whether you were driving home, or, and it was just small trivial stuff. You always made time also, too, when you made time out of, you know, your duties spread all across the county, but you would come down and meet with some of us, you know, whether it was at a seniors' home, and we would sit in the living room, and you would try to see, you know, what you could do for an issue that we were talking about, or if it was just showing up at a community event. I mean, for someone that had, I mean, I feel like my plate's so full, I can only imagine what it'd been like. And for so many years, I mean, it's just crazy to think. So thank you, Don, for everything you've done. I look forward to seeing you around more, but thank you. And I look forward to getting your advice.
Don, I'll just say a few words. Again, I'll just reiterate the good work that's been done over your career, not only as supervisor, but prior to that with Toby Johnson and folks. And so thank you for that work. And personally, thank you for picking the phone up when I call. And I'll never forget the first time I decided to run for public office. You were one of the people I called, and you said, "Rich, we'll meet anywhere." And I said, "Really? I work in Elk Grove." And you said, "Oh, absolutely. I'll come to Elk Grove and meet with you." And so it wasn't, you just didn't care about where you met. You were just there to serve, and I appreciate that. And good luck in your retirement, and I'm sure you'll do, continue to do good things. So thanks. Thank you, Rich.
I'm really glad that the city recognized your wife. I'm sure she has put in much unseen effort and sacrifice, so I really appreciate that. It was a real pleasure to have served with you on a few meetings. I won't reiterate everything that everybody has said. It's all true and accurate. Thank you so much for your service, and I think it's just the last stop before you finally, finally...
I think so. I kidded about it.
I'm gonna take that as a yes, and I think it's really wonderful that you started in Galt, and here you are finishing in Galt. The citizens are very proud of you as well. They should be. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you all so very much. And again, just one more time, thank you for certainly the kindness that you showed me here this evening, for your friendship, and folks here, as I said, and many who aren't here this evening, who again, as a young person, a young man growing up in this community, my teachers, the community members, the friends, the parents of my friends, all had an impact on me. And again, I appreciate what you said, Mr. Mayor, that obviously this has been my hometown, and I've done my best to represent the entirety of the district. But, you know, if we're all fortunate enough to have a home place we call home, this is where I come home every evening. And so it's been a real, real privilege to have served, as I said, but also I thank each and every one of you here this evening for the recognition. And again, I thank you on behalf of Brenda for the flowers as well. So.
You're very welcome, sir. The next subject is cow cycling rewards by Cow Waste.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jack. I'm the Marketing Communications Manager at Cow Waste. We've met briefly in the past few times. We're here to recognize tonight two businesses and one organization in the community for the recycling and sustainability efforts in 2022 with Cow Waste Recycle Recognition Awards. So this award recognizes Galt businesses and organizations that play an integral part in waste reduction efforts through proper recycling and other sustainability efforts. So with that, I also have Lisa Klotz here, who you're all familiar with as well. She'll start with the first recipient.
Thank you again. I'm Lisa Klotz, and I am here on behalf of Cow Waste to offer our first award to a small but mighty business. So the first award goes to Dutch Bros. And it's small in size but large in impact. Dutch Bros. is a relatively new business to Galt, and they quickly got on board with food waste recycling services. As a wildly popular refreshment spot for youth, we commend Dutch Brothers for being a positive role model for Galtonians of all ages in recycling their organics.
Our next...
They weren't able to be here today.
Yes, the representatives from Dutch Brothers. Do we have anyone from Strattan's Pizzeria here? I don't believe so. Well, Strattan's Pizzeria is our second recipient. Strattan's Pizzeria maintains very clean mixed recycling content, even given the amount of food that they handle on a daily basis. Their recycling is still very clean. Also, Strattan's Pizza was quick to utilize food waste recycling at their business when those services were made available by Cow Waste.
And our third business that we'd like to honor is the Sunshine Food Pantry. And I believe they are here in force. So, but I'd like to call forward Fay Gaines, who is sort of our mainstay. Come on. Sort of the mainstay for the Sunshine Food Pantry. She was there when it started, and she's there now, and she keeps us all glued together. So, oh, I shouldn't say us. I'm talking for Cow Waste right now, aren't I?
Yeah.
Oops. All right. So we honor the service that Sunshine Food Pantry has brought to our community. Their mission is to strengthen partnerships in an ongoing effort to provide nourishment with care and respect for people in our community that may find themselves food insecure at any point in their lives, seniors on a fixed income, working poor, those between employment, college students, and much more. Behind the scenes, these hard-working volunteers, they are all volunteers, of the Sunshine Food Pantry not only reclaim food for distribution, but they have the same dedication to serve our environment with respect and care. Sunshine Food Pantry has stellar recycling and waste sorting habits. Mixed recycling and food waste is always sorted. I've seen a finger point sometimes. I'm not doing that right. So it has all sorted and always sorted from contamination. Sunshine Food Pantry participates in our community with commitment to integrity. And so I am very happy, Jack and I, and Cow Waste as a whole, are very happy to give this award to recycle recognition award to Sunshine Food Pantry.
I would like to thank Cow Waste for recognizing us. We try to do a really good job doing everything that we're supposed to. We have the most fantastic volunteers in Galt who are always there to help, and they do a great job doing everything we do. And our goal is to treat people with kindness and love and make sure that they have... Thank you.
Does council have any comments? Thank you, Cow Waste, for recognizing wonderful businesses in our community, and I think the Sunshine Food Pantry is an ongoing miracle of the loaves and fishes on a daily basis. The next item is Galt Teen Center Update by Annette Klutz? Did I get that right?
No. It's Coonzie. No, that's okay. It's a hard one to pronounce. Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Vandenberg, Vice Mayor Sandu, and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to share an update on the Galt Teen Center. We were here a few years ago as we were beginning our journey, and today we're here to give an update. So I think we're gonna have a PowerPoint up in a second. During the presentation, we'll share our accomplishments, what we have on the horizon, and how you and the community might be able to help us as we continue our journey. Okay. Oh, that's a button. Okay. I know. Okay. And then if time allows, we have a few guests here to say some words. So first, a quick recap. We formed in 2019 and became a 501(c)(3) organization in July of 2019. I have the great pleasure of working with a wonderful team on our board. They're all women, all mothers, and they each bring a unique talent to the team. Our bios are linked on this page to our website, which is galtteencenter.org. And this has very much been a grassroots effort with a lot of love behind it. We presented in September 2019 before the council and followed that with a community design workshop, where we invited the community in to give input on the teen center. After a search, we were able to find a home where we're at today at 550 C Street, which is at the iconic, right below the iconic Galt Water Tower. We opened our doors in August of 2021 and started to welcome teens. Then we followed that with the official grandeur of ribbon-cutting ceremony and also a grand opening where over 200 attended from the community. So to highlight a few accomplishments through our various efforts and activities, both before we opened our doors and after, we have made connections with over 375 local teens. When we first opened, we were just hoping we would help a handful of teens. But however, we far exceeded those numbers, and we now have 20 to 40 teens come on a daily basis when we're open. Some teens have been with us since we opened our doors, and some come and they'll wait outside on the bench for an hour for us to open. At our last after-hours by the tower event, we had over 40 teens attend. It's become a very nice community with some really tight bonds being formed. The teens actually coined the term after-hours by the tower, and I'll talk a little more about that, how we get teen perspective, in a minute. And we've also engaged in community collaboration on an ongoing basis, helping at many functions with the Galt Area Historical Society, like the birthday celebration and kite day, and act as docents, and also city events. And we also are gonna have the teens help at an upcoming fundraiser for the St. Martin Foundation. And then we also partnered with the Galt Lions Club to do a community pancake breakfast on the Independence Day celebration. We've also tried to identify opportunities for teen leadership. For example, we have a teen ambassador, and we'll talk more about that in a section, and he's actually here today. And we also have some fan favorites of the teens listed here. They love the pool table, and they love the arts and crafts and painting and things like that. They also have some, built some really special memories through the parades, Friendsgiving, a Christmas party, and just being together. It's amazing how they have formed bonds with each other. And at each board meeting, we share stories that have touched us, and I don't know if you know that or not. But this week, I'm gonna share stories about how I saw two other teens use their out privileges to walk another one home, and how also some other teens taught another teen to play pool so that he could play in the upcoming pool tournament. All right. So getting teen perspective is very important to us. One example of us doing this is creating our teen ambassador role. And what they do is they welcome new teens, show them around, see if they need anything. They attend Galt Teen Center board meetings to give input from their perspective. They participate in presentations and other miscellaneous activities, like leading a, you know, a party activity. I've put some quotes up there just because we hear a lot of things from the teens. A lot of them are just always amazed. I mean, this is for us. We can come here. We can come here for free. And so they're always amazed by that. In addition, they feel very welcome here. I love the bottom one that just came in last week, and it was, I promised my mom I would do dishes for two weeks if she brought me here. Right. And then I have a teen here that will share a little bit after the presentation on what he likes about the center. Okay. These are just some fun photos from our pancake breakfast. On the bottom right, we helped at the Galt Historical Society events. That's them in the center being together, the Halloween, a lot of the art activities. And then Dutch Bros, speaking of Dutch Bros, they donated over 20 gifts for the teens to have at our Christmas party. And they were really good gifts. So it was really nice. Okay, so coming up, we are going to, we're open the first Friday till nine. We are now adding a second Friday. So our second Friday is gonna start this week on the 20th, and we have a teen pool tournament coming up, and it's to kick off our second after-hours by the tower. So thank you, Mayor Vandenberg and Councilman Farmer, who are gonna try and come out and play with the teens and also maybe play with each other. We'll see. And so they're super excited about that. On March 25, we're having our Roaring Twenties fundraiser. We had it last year at Brewster's. It was super fun. So we're hoping that anyone 18 and over can come join us. There's lots of really cute outfits on Amazon, so everyone's welcome. And then we also have a monthly activities calendar. There's a link there. We try and do something special each month for the teens. Then we have some new features that are coming that we're super excited about. One is a book club. We may have, I'm working to try and get a local author to be our first book. And then also, we're gonna be doing a music activity as well for the teens. So we often get asked, we often get asked how we can, how someone can help us. So there's lots of ways. Definitely follow us. And also, we have different opportunities. You can be a monthly contributor. Just a little bit each month helps. You can be a snack angel, as you can imagine, teens. They like to eat, so people drop off chips or water and things like that that we can give to them. We have an Amazon wishlist that's linked on our website. We also have volunteers and committee members that can help with like fundraising or any, you know, not everyone wants to be in front with the teens. Some do, some don't. Some wanna work behind the scenes, and that's okay, too. So we definitely have spots for everybody. We have a little bit of everything for everyone. And then also, wanted to mention that specific to the city, we also wanted to mention that we are due to get a grant for a vehicle, but it's not quite enough to purchase a vehicle. We wanna be able to transport teens from the other side of town, the teens that go to Liberty and Estralita, to the center and even possibly McCaffrey if they're in the age range. We also maybe wanna do field trips in the future. So as you can imagine, not having enough to purchase a vehicle, we're hoping that you might have maybe leads or options, or we don't know if the city has a vehicle that they might be willing to sell to us. But something, that's one way that we're putting feelers out for that. And then also, because we are bringing in such large numbers now, safety is very important to us. So we'd like to see maybe if we collaborate or reach out on emergency preparedness. There's a lot of Galt youth there at one time, and so we wanna make sure that we have done our part to be prepared. So we don't know if there's a particular body to contact, if that's the Galt PD or somewhere else that would be helping, be able to help us. We're just not exactly sure to where to start with that. Okay. Last but not least, this presentation would not be complete without thank yous. If I can make this slide as big as this whole room, it still wouldn't be big enough to express our gratitude for what we've received from this community here. So wanted to first thank Dr. Sanford and the Galt Historical Society, because they were super instrumental in getting us our physical location that we were searching for, our home. So we wanna say a special thank you to them. But we also have local leaders and local businesses that have been tremendously supportive to us. Vice Mayor Sandu's played a large part in supporting the teen center, so thank you. And then it's perfect that Mr. Don Natoli is here, because he's been very instrumental in recommending some county grants for us. Mark Jackson, Next Generation Barber, Brewster's, Velvet Grill, BMD, Dutch Bros., Softcom, Cow Waste. Local restaurants have given us food and discounts, and other nonprofits, the Lions, Kiwanis, LaHeim, and even individual contributors have helped us. So we are so grateful for all of that. The city also provided us a nonprofit grant that we were very happy to receive through the American Rescue Plan Act funds. And we also have local artists that come and provide their services, teaching the teens to paint or ceramics and things like that, all free of charge. And then we also have, last but not least, these last two groups we could not do the teen center without. First, it's all volunteers who come every week and spend time with the teens, and we have one here today as well. So with all of that, we've just been super grateful. So thank you. Thank you to everyone here that's played a part in all of that. So there's a few articles here. The Galt Herald has done a tremendous job of giving us coverage for our events and our needs, so we're very grateful to them. So there's lots of links. If you do a search, they're also linked on our website as well. So thank you again for allowing us to be here. I wanna leave with some final words. This is on our business plan. We have this quote from Mother Teresa, "I alone cannot change the world, but I can cast a stone across the waters to create many ripples." So we are creating lots of ripples, we hope. So before I conclude, I wanted to invite up our teen ambassador and one of our volunteers to say a couple words about what volunteers to say a couple of words about what they like about the Galt Teen Center.
Uh, hi.
Hello.
It's okay, it's okay, relax.
Uh, my name is Ben. I'm the teen ambassador of the Galt Teen Center. I've been a part of the Galt Teen Center since it was the first week of the Galt Teen Center. I've been one of the first ones here. I've been through a lot with this establishment. This place is like a second home to me. It really is. I don't know what I would do without it, really. Everything there is just amazing and couldn't ask for anything more.
Hi, I'm one of the volunteers and I would just like to say that if these teens are a reflection of this community, you all need to be very, very proud because they are the most kind, thoughtful, respectful and very entertaining humans that I've ever had the privilege of hanging out with. So it's really a great group. It's a privilege and thank you for all your support.
So thank you very much again, and I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
Counsel?
Ned, I just want to say thank you to you and the, the small group, you know, who you are, who, who came with the vision. I mean, it's easy to come up with a vision. A lot of people come and they say, oh, we have this grandiose idea of what we're going to do this or that. But actually seeing it through can be very difficult, getting it off the ground, you know, sometimes those dreams can be hard. So thank you for, you know, you guys' persistence and your, you know, your commitment to that for the community. So thanks.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Ned, I want to just reiterate what Councilmember Farmer said. Thank you for your work. I remember being in Chabola one night and putting the vision together. And you guys certainly did a great job of public outreach and, and obviously outreach to the youth. That's amazing, the amount of kids that you have coming. So thank you, Ben, for stepping up and being the first ambassador. That's good work. But anyhow, thanks again, and be sure to pass on our thanks to your entire board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sandeep. Thank you for, you know, the building up that teen center because teen is our future. So thank you for that. And there is on the report, you mentioned something, you may be in the future, I need something from the city. And we have the city manager certainly approached them and set a meeting with him and certainly we will support that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank you so very much, you know, in a world of the digital divide, it's really nice to see something, a bridge, if you will, where people can come together. And I don't think, as much as they do appreciate it now, I don't think they'll realize how much, how beneficial it is to them and their lives for maybe 10 or 15 years to come. Honestly, it's really wonderful to see what a great success, and I know it was a lot of hard work, but thank you so much for making a wonderful thing in our community. I really appreciate it.
Thank you again.
Okay, if it was up to me, I'd end the meeting right there. But, but now we will move to public comment. Madam Clerk?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency, public comments may also be submitted as noted above via the options listed on the first page of the agenda for providing live public comment or prior to the meeting via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting, which will be distributed to city council, made part of the official minutes and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting, but will not be read out loud.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I would just like to mention to everyone and our fellow council members that often people are very passionate, but by law, we are not allowed to engage in back and forth, perhaps a brief comment of several, you know, a few sentences, but it is not a back and forth. That's why it's a public comment on non-agenda items. If you wish to speak on an agenda item, that will occur during that particular item. With that said, is there any public comment?
First, we have Bob Ballet.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Vice Mayor, fellow council members and staff. I'd like to make a public comment on the Commission on Aging's ability to engage with the community and then to report to the city council in an advocacy type way. And that is, I wanted to give you a little background on how this advocacy situation came about. The Commission on Aging is in the process of asking the city council at some point to take the word advocacy that was removed back in 2015 and reinsert it so that we can not just be listening to people on their concerns, but to actually be able to act upon it to the point where we then report to the city council. We don't make any decisions. We don't take any sides. It's, it's a, it's a totally neutral part of the Commission on Aging so that, so that we can be more effective with responding to the concerns of seniors. And so I just want to give you a brief, I'm not even going to take all five minutes, a brief background on how this came about. Back in 2015, when I had been under commission for only two or three months, we were informed by our liaison that we needed to consider the changes, changes to the, to the bylaws that we had at the time. And specifically what we, what we needed to consider, and I'll tell you what that was real quick. So there was a part of the bylaws that said that part of our duties was to refer problems to concerned agencies with follow-up as appropriate. And that kind of like, that was an advocacy type thing that I read into it. And so we discussed it. We needed to vote on it. It was a change. Previous to that, that statement was in it, then they took it out because that's what they recommended in the changes. And, because I voted for, for that, taking it out, not knowing exactly what I was doing because I had just joined the commission. And so we've been trying since then to a more or less degree to try to get that advocacy part back into our bylaws because our mission statement indicates that we advocate for the seniors to you guys, not to anybody else, not to their bosses or whatever, but to you guys at some point. We listen to their concerns, we write them down, we make a report, we come to the commission, to the commi, to the council and we let you know that this is what transpired. And then you guys give us directions on what we need to do. That's how it's, it used to work. So we've been trying to get that back into it. And my fellow commissioner, my vice chair actually, Andrea, we're the only ones right now that are on the commission, just the two of us. And you guys, you guys are going to change that tonight, hopefully. So anyway, I wanted to give you a little background on all of that so that when she speaks, you have a context. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Andrea Johnson.
Hello. Thank you, everybody. First of all, I'm really sorry you have to listen to me. I'm getting over a cold. So if I don't sound like myself, it's a cold. It's not COVID. It's a cold. Anyway, so the stick says. I brought this for you guys to look at. This was our old mission statement, which actually is still on the website from 2017 when we changed it. And then on the second page, if you look, it says Commission on Aging, and this is the new one. So there's a old one and a current one, so you guys can kind of reflect back on the change. And then on the bylaws of Galt Commission on Aging, if you turn to page two, the duty of the commission, it will talk about, the purpose of the Commission on Aging is to act as a forum. I'm guessing everybody here knows what a forum is. It's kind of where you discuss things. Great. And advocate for all matters to concerned senior citizens. And we were putting the word advocate back in. Also too, it kind of goes over the rules, right? Like, so we don't go over what we're supposed to or, or go rogue or anything like that. It talks about the commission studies, reviews, evaluates and make recommendations to the city council on any matters affecting elderly people in the city, including health, education, housing, transportation and recreation. As you know, we do bingo every month. And these come up, or every week, and these come up. Some of these things do come up. And it's great to sit around and talk about it, but we have to be able to deliver if there's something negative or way positive to you guys, so you guys can help us act upon it, right? And also, you know, I was kind of looking at the other commissions and on the last page, if you turn, so maybe it's just the website's wrong, but on the youth commission, on number two, one, two, it talks about serve as a resource and advocate to the city council on teen issues. And as a commissioner on aging, I have spoke to the teens and they said that they have, from the city council, the city manager, that they use advocate a lot in their meetings and that they should be advocating for the teens and for city council. That's all we're wanting to do. We don't want to put and sit on our hands and say, oh, here's a pamphlet, go solve it. We would like to be able to take a report and give it to you guys. So you guys have the ultimate say. You guys can go take it to the state commission on aging or take it to APS or whoever you guys feel if it's over our heads. I guess you guys appointed us and I'm asking for trust with your appointment. And trust us, if there is something negative that goes on, you guys will be the first ones to know. We're not going to call a meeting and call everybody in. We just want to be able to help a senior, someone who really they feel alone and they have nobody. And you guys do know, I'm very passionate about the seniors in our community. And sometimes they just want an ear to listen to them and say, okay, well, let's work on this and let's write a letter. Other times, they, it might be something nasty about their, their housing or, or like they might have 20,000 cockroaches running around and nobody's listening to them. Well, we do a report, get it ready and give it to you guys so you guys could help deal with it. Because, you know, these are our people who help form our community. And now that they're older and they feel like they have no say, let's give them a little bit of say so they can say what they need and feel the support of our city behind them 100%. Now, we all get the cranky ones, right? Like, why lie? But you know what? They still have a voice that needs to be heard. And that's what I'm asking. And I, I understand that it's against the city municipal code, but then why is it okay for the youth commission to do it and not us? So it's just a lot of conflict and I'm here to ask you guys to help us. Please clarify it because we're getting it from a couple of different ends and we could really, really use our city council to help us with this, since we're reporting to you That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment?
Casey Boyd.
Good evening. My name's Casey Boyd and I've occupied an office space at 1067 C Street, just across the street from us in the Save Mart Shopping Center to run my insurance business since 2018. My goal this evening in being here is to request immediate action to resolve the homeless issue in our great American little town. I'm a lifelong resident of Galt and like many, have recently watched the population of the unhoused increase and cause damage to our community areas, as well as cause a sense of fear and discomfort for families in the area, including my own. I refuse to give up and accept that this is our new normal. I loved growing up in this town. That's why when it came time to choose an office space, which I was recruited to open in the Roseville-Rockland area, I said I would absolutely not and I would only do it if I could open an office in my hometown of Galt. I wanted the opportunity to support the local economy and give back by providing jobs, sponsoring local sports teams, contributing to fundraising dinners, supporting 4H and FFA projects, participating in the Fourth of July Parade and any other annual events that are open to us. In addition to my business, my husband and I are raising our two young daughters here where we support other local businesses daily. We support this town and like most, we want it to be the best that it can be, which unfortunately is being hindered due to the homeless population. The day-to-day operation of my business is impacted with the homeless that are living in the shopping center. They're frequently sleeping in front of my office, digging through the trash cans, yelling, knocking on our windows. They've even entered the open door, stolen the candy dish and helped themselves to the water in our dispenser, only to fill up the cup and throw it while yelling obscenities in my office. What used to be a welcoming office with our door constantly propped open is now a lock door where clients have to knock in order to enter. As a female-owned business with all female employees, we regularly feel unsettled and fear our safety when walking to and from the office in the early hours of the morning and after dark in the evening. We use the non-emergency police line like we are instructed to do. We document all the events to the landlord. And although we do receive empathy, it seems there is a lack of action. That was until last week when my seven-year-old daughter was with me at my office and witnessed a homeless man exposing himself and urinating right in front of my office. Enough is enough, so I took to my social media to express my frustration. I was met with personal visits and phone calls from the chief, the chief of police, code enforcement and many other recognized individuals in our community, including some of you that reached out on Facebook and email, which I truly appreciate. I appreciate all that support, but I just need to know that actionable steps are going to be taken to move forward. I'm not unreasonable and I know that there's laws and restrictions with what exactly can be done. I also understand that with privately owned property, certain steps must be taken. The Chu family, which owns the property where I have my office, has provided a letter of authority to the police department to enforce no trespassing and no loitering. I hope that moving forward this year, that letter will begin to be used to actually remove the homeless when we call and there is a problem. Because as of now, the police come out, speak to them and allow them to remain where they were. I was contacted by numerous other Galt residents when I shared my experiences last week. And just a few of those included a woman that shared that her teenage son had a part-time job holding a sign on the sidewalk in front of the shopping center for another business. The homeless approached him, spit on him and then ran with his school backpack. I've personally been verbally harassed multiple times, walking two doors down from my office to the donut shop to buy donuts and coffee for my team. Another woman shared with me that she took her sons to Subway and they witnessed a woman going to the bathroom in a bucket on the side of Subway in broad daylight. I could share other experiences, but we've all seen most of these things and it's time to do something. When I shared these frustrations, I'm also told that Galt isn't as bad as Lowdy or Stockton. That's not an excuse. I don't live in Lowdy or Stockton. I'm not raising my family there and I'm not operating my small business there. Again, my goal tonight is just to see action to eradicate the homeless in the shopping center of 1067 C Street, directly across the street from us, for the safety of our taxpaying citizens, business owners and most importantly, our local youth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madison Delbrug.
Hello, everyone. My name is Madison Delbrug and I am the current president of the Galt Chamber of Commerce. I was born and raised in Galt, attended Galt Elementary, Middle and High Schools and then moved on to San Diego State University where I earned a bachelor's of science degree in business administration with a concentration in entrepreneurship. While I had many choices as to where I'd start my adult life and career, I chose to move back to my hometown here in Galt. It's funny, growing up, I always wanted to move out of Galt, but as I grew and matured, I realized all that Galt has to offer. A small-town feel and familiarity, traditional values and a true community that supports and cares for citizens and local businesses. I currently own a family business here in Galt, Parker Realty, and I am passionate about this town and am determined to do my part to help it thrive. The chamber has been the premier business advocacy organization The Chamber has been the premier business advocacy organization in Galt since its inception. In fact, we are the second oldest business in Galt, second only to the Galt Herald. We have an extensive track record of successful political advocacy, business promotion, business support, and grant-writing assistance, event planning and execution, and community support. We have spent the last couple of years improving and rebuilding our structure, our systems, and our processes. At the end of last year, the Galt Chamber Board got together to see where we could go from here. We did some vision planning and threw out a plethora of ideas of what the Chamber could and should do to continue our trajectory of constant improvement. We realized that while we have a lot of ideas, we, the Chamber Board, lack time and manpower to bring these ideas to life. So we decided to seek out the help and guidance of an experienced business leader. Enter Frank Gialdo, our interim executive director. Because I know he wouldn't do himself justice if introduced himself, I want to tell you a little bit about Frank. He has an extremely impressive resume, and is actually a past Galt Chamber executive director. He served in my mom, Terry Parker's, tenure on the Chamber Board. Frank is a passionate promoter of agritourism and value-added U.S. agricultural exports. He grew up on his family's vineyard in Lodi, California, that still, that he still farms today, and is currently developing a small coconut farm in the Philippines. Since retiring from a 20-year career in law enforcement in 2004, Frank has helped raise global awareness and profitability for several U.S.-based agricultural producers. His eclectic experiences have given Frank an extensive network of government, media, and business connections that literally spans the globe. In May of 2006, he organized an international wine tasting event that resulted in Costa Rican President Oscar Arias serving three boutique wines from Lodi, California, at his presidential inauguration. Frank has been an organizer of several inbound and outbound trade missions to China that have resulted in the purchase of multiple container loads of various California products, including wine and tree nuts. Over the years, Frank has personally hosted numerous high-ranking foreign dignitaries from China, Costa Rica, Japan, and Russia at his vineyard home in the spirit of friendship and promoting California agriculture. Frank's international activities promoting Lodi wine and tourism has received coverage in The Los Angeles Times, Miami Herald, Central Valley Business Times, Honolulu Star Advertiser, Sacramento Bee, Stockton Record, AM Costa Rica, El Financiero, The Russian Observer, Jing Daily, China Wine News, China Daily, and the World Journal. In 2012, Frank was awarded the Tourism Advocate of the Year for his work in promoting international opportunities for his hometown. Frank has served as the very first director of international business development for the Lodi District Chamber of Commerce, the past chairman of the Board for Visit Lodi Tourism Bureau, and, as I said previously, a past executive director of the Galt District Chamber of Commerce. As you can tell, Frank is an incredibly interesting guy, rich with experience from a number of endeavors. He is back and forth between here and his newest ventures in the Philippines, but if you get the chance, take him out to coffee, get to know him, and pick his brain. He is very generous and loves to chat about all of his life's work, and he truly does love Galt. Frank has led our executive board in a lot of critical thinking and strategic planning for the Chamber. When analyzing where we should go now, Frank noticed the Chamber doesn't have a Visitors and Conference Bureau or a full-time experienced executive director. To cut to the chase, so to speak, the Chamber would like the $500,000 to $550,000 left over in ARPA funds designated for Galt businesses allocated to the Galt Chamber of Commerce to support our goal in establishing a Galt Visitors and Conference Bureau, hiring an experienced and highly competent executive director, branding the experience of Galt, and launching a destination marketing campaign to promote tourism.
Excuse me, Madison.
Support the benefit of Galt as a whole.
Okay, sorry.
Don't worry.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Frank Gialdo.
The man, the myth. Kind of embarrassed after that. A lot of that stuff, I guess, is online, but I did give Madison some of it. I'm a narcissist, what can I say? Yeah, first time I was here was probably 10 years ago, and I was working for President Madison's mom, Terry. I met Terry even years prior to that. I used to be a bounty hunter, and she was a dispatcher for Lodi PD. So crazy stories. People ask me what I've been doing since the 10 years ago when I was the executive director here, and I tell people I was a, became a grape nuts farmer. Not the cereal, but I grew grapes in Lodi and coconuts in the Philippines. And one thing I learned from that experience is, because one of the reasons I'm in the Philippines, my wife was from there originally, and I'm trying to do some poverty reduction and economic development work for a small village, using agritourism to help create jobs for somewhere that's in the middle of nowhere. And what I realized in this endeavor is that if I was going to help people, I needed to stop thinking in terms of that I was selling grapes, or that I was selling coconuts, because that's really not what I'm selling. I'm selling emotions and feelings. One of my best friends, his name's Barry Morrow, he happened to write the movie Rain Man, the old movie with 1988 starring Tom Cruise, Dustin Hoffman. And Barry is one of my business mentors, and he always talks about what he refers to as the power of story. The power of story to transform a group of people, possibly a town, to tell a story and to transform the trajectory that somewhere goes. And I believe that Galt has a story, and needs to be developed, and a brand, and that destination marketing is something that we need to be starting to do. You know, the 10 years ago when I was here, and looking to where we're at now, I've noticed great improvements in both the Galt District Chamber of Commerce, and also great improvements with this city. You all have done an amazing job with the finite number of resources, providing, making this the great American little town that everybody loves so much about Galt. The fact that we have such a great police department, and we do. There's challenges, of course, public works, parks and recreation, all these amenities that you all have done such a great job in managing. Those things could be even better if you had more revenue. What we're proposing is to raise all ships. The ARPA money that's designated for businesses, we believe that the best way for that money to be utilized is with the Galt Chamber of Commerce, which is, you know, the designated premier organization of businesses, so it makes sense for us to be the ones to manage that money. And we believe that destination marketing is the way that we could really help, not only with TOT tax, but also increasing sales tax revenue. We've increased our, and that's thanks to your economic development team, by the way. You've done an amazing job. You guys have increased your inventory of hotel beds by roughly 50% just recently, and that's a great thing. But I'm sure Mr. Vice Mayor Sandu could tell you, there's also probably a concern that if we don't do something, we're going to just have a lower occupancy. So we need to put heads in beds, and we can do that with a comprehensive destination marketing plan, with a visitor's center. Those things require upfront money. This would be a one-time ask from all of you, so that we could hire. One of the reasons they brought me on is I won't be the full-time executive director. I am just an interim. But my goal is to help the Chamber find that right person who has destination marketing experience, and can take the ball farther down the field. So it looks like I'm just about running out of time. I'm looking forward to having a meeting with City Manager Heinz, so that we can talk about what our plan is. Further, I know we've met with all of you on an individual basis, and I want to thank you all for taking your time to hear us out. So thank you all.
Are there any more comments, public comments?
Bonnie Rodriguez.
So you heard from the pretty one, and the professional, and now you're stuck with me. But I do want to correct something that Madison said when she was naming who gave Frank all the accolades in New York Times or whoever, but she forgot the Galt Herald. But we covered it, too. But I guess I'm here, of course, we spoke with all five of the council members, and just so the public is aware, I really, really want to stress that that money was already allocated. It's not going to come out of any other fund. We're not taking money from anyone. We're not asking for anything that someone will, you know, the seniors will suffer, or anything else like that. Just want to make it very clear that council has already, and you guys know this, sorry, I'm going to talk to them, that council has already allocated that money to the businesses. And as Frank and Madison pointed out, we are the largest representative of those businesses in town. This money will be well-spent. The city, the, I'm sorry, what are we? Chamber, thank you. See, they're listening. The Chamber has a great history of bringing feet into Galt. We used to do the Strawberry Festival, as much as we were made fun of locally. We brought those people to town. We brought people, and it was a three-day festival. We brought people to put their beds in, or their heads in beds for the two hotels that were here. We need to do that again. That's probably our most immediate thing right now. As Frank said, doubled our inventory. Who's coming? So in the process of this, I have made our proposal and our pitch, and what our pitch is, Frank said, we are going to, our proposal is, we're going to bring the people here in tourism. There's the big, great divide in Galt, right? And I don't even think it's as great as some people say. People want amenities here in Galt, but they shut the door behind them. They don't want any more rooftops, but we know that cities rely on property taxes and the other benefits that come for more rooftops. So we need to have a balance. Galt just passed the Measure Q. Galt already has Measure R. With our proposal to bring in people from the outside to contribute to those measures, that burden is not only on our own people. And we don't need to add tons of rooftops to see more benefits, financial benefits. This is the long game. We can, the city can, go and spend that $500,000 on a one-time purchase, and then we're done. This is an investment into our city. This investment is longstanding investment that will boost what you have already put, that the city already has in those two measures. We have done a lot of footwork on this. We would love to sit down with staff and go over the plan to make them comfortable. I know that there's some legality questions of it. I just will put out there, not only have I personally had long conversations with congressional staffers about the situation and what we're proposing, the comment I have gotten from the three that I have talked to has been, this is exactly what the intent of Congress was with this ARPA funding, was to boost the economy. One-time purchases, in fact, in the initial, the initial budget for it, capital expenditures were not included at all. They did not want the money going there. They were trying to boost the economy. This right here is a plan that'll boost the economy, and bringing a visitor's center, this is my dream. Everybody's like, we all love our cows, right? Our cows are out there. That is like the talk of the town. People say, we don't want to be known as the cow town. Too late, people love the cows. People are stopping and coming into town. Could you imagine one of our cows up at the Sacramento Airport? Visit Galt. These are the outside-of-the-box things we're thinking of that we want to bring. Don't want Galt to miss another opportunity. I have archives of about, almost 100 years of Galt missing opportunities, passing them by. This is an opportunity that I urge you to take. So at this point, we know you can't make a decision today, so what our ask is right now, is that at the end of the meeting, when you are asked, if you want to bring future items or give direction to staff, we are asking you to direct staff to work with us, so that we can put together an actual proposal, so the next time you meet, you can make a decision. So that's our ask.
Thank you.
So my name is Brooke Stamer. I am the current vice president for County Line Youth Soccer League, and today, I just wanted to bring to you some attention of some of the battles we've been fighting as a youth sports organization here in town. So last season, County Line had roughly 850 kids registered to play fall soccer. That spans between our recreational program and our new competitive program that's been revamped, that is growing rapidly. Our season gets cut very short due to the elements. We aren't able to play when it's over 100 degrees, so most of August is out. This year, we had to push to start after Labor Day. When it rains, the city closes the fields, so anytime it's wet, we're not allowed to play, so we have to finish by October. In previous seasons, we had to eliminate tournaments for half the age groups due to tournaments going into mid-November and the weather not permitting, and us not getting to proceed. So that gives us roughly eight, 10 weeks if we're lucky, to have a season for 850 kids, where we attempt about 10 games per team. So sometimes, we're having to do multiple games per week. In short, this last season was a bit of a disaster when it came to scheduling. The city has been working really great with us. We're appreciative for the relationship that we do have, but what the problem we're having is, is that we just don't have the field space to accommodate the youth in town. I know there's other sports that are also kind of battling over field space, and as the other youth sports are growing, which is a great problem for our town to have, we're all now battling over field availability. So right now, County Line is allocated to McCaffrey, one grass field at Walker Park, occasional use of the turf at Walker Park, and occasional use at Veterans Field. That is four fields to play games on for 850 children. McCaffrey, we've been able to hand-make three fields on that field, but those are for the younger age groups. Our COE can be a bit accommodating according to their field availability, so that's always up in the air every year. So it's a problem that we've been having for a while. We only have lights at Veterans, which we only have occasionally, and the one grass field in the turf at Walker, so that limits our ability to play later in the evening during the weeknights. So what happened last year is, we had to have the games to get everyone's money worth for the season, so half the teams weren't able to practice because we had to use the fields for the games. So I don't know if I necessarily even have an ask for you guys. I just want to bring this to attention, because as you guys are looking in approving planning and new homes, we always hear how we have enough park per capita, but it's not a park that we need. It's the sports complex that we're short on, and I think that's something that gets overlooked, and our youth are suffering. And we have a board meeting tomorrow, and we have to discuss our roster sizes and potentially capping registrations. So now we're at the point where we're not allowing all of the youth in Galt to play because we just don't have the fields to actually accommodate a season for these poor kids. So that's a huge decision we have to make tomorrow for the upcoming season, and our registration starts in April. So obviously, we're not going to have a solution for this season. I just ask, as you guys are approving more and more homes, when you're looking at the parks per homes and housing, bring in the families, that's great, but we need to be able to accommodate the youth in this town. It's the same as the teen center. We need to have what the town needs for these kids to stay local, so we're not losing them to Elk Grove or to Lodi. We have a lot of kids that go to Elk Grove to play sports, because we just can't accommodate them properly here in town. Okay. I think that's all. I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything. So thank you for your time, and if you guys have any questions, please feel free to reach out. I know we're definitely happy to have conversations. I know Corinne Blevins works really closely with Armando regarding the fields that we do have, so hopefully, we can maybe find some more in the future. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
I just wanted to say, I definitely would encourage all the youth organizations, not just County Line Soccer, but as we go through processes and approving things, and with Measure Q money being currently appropriated to trying to make, you know, Parks and Rec a better organization over the next few years, input is important. So coming to council meetings, coming to the Parks and Rec Commission meetings, and being actively a voice at those forums, so that those representatives on those commissions... So coming to council meetings, coming to the Parks and Rec Commission meetings, and being actively a voice at those forums so that those representatives on those commissions in Parks and Rec can know what the needs are from the citizen's perspective. So just want to throw that out there if you're not already doing that. But we want to, we want to hear from you guys so we know what the needs are. So thank you for your comments.
Well said. Is there any more comments, Madam Clerk?
Pamela Ochoa.
Hello, City Council. I see a lot of familiar faces from my youth, and congratulations to most of your re-elections for the City of Galt. I'll just make this real brief. My family's been here for almost 50 years. We all love Galt. We love Galt because it was a small town. We loved the country. We loved the wildlife. I mean, that's always what brought me home from Sacramento, getting out of the city and coming to my small little town. As we've heard already, there's some concerns about the homeless. I currently live over, off of cost, on the, near the bridge of the Sacramento County and San Joaquin County line. The concern is the squatters. It's becoming a biohazard, public health, safety concern now. With the recent rains, if you have just seen all the trash that has just gone down our little, little stream through there, it's just, it's just incredible, and the stench. This is now becoming a public health concern to me. I've been in the health field for 26 years. It's been brought to my attention by many of our neighbors. They have found hypodermic needles. They have found propane tanks. They, we see small fires down there quite often. My biggest concern, though, as a healthcare provider retired now, where are the bodily fluids going? We have taken precautions against COVID. We need to take precautions against Hep A, Hep B, Hep C, and AIDS. If we've got hypodermic needles floating down that water, and we've got little children in those neighborhoods, or adults, animals, that's a concern. We also have a concern for the environment and our wildlife. It's my understanding that part of that property, which is private, but I believe there's three or four people involved, including the City of Galt, San Joaquin County, and Fish and Game Wildlife. There are protected easements for those animals. We used to see deer. We used to see the, the hawks mating during spring, the eagerts. And because of all the trash, it's becoming a bio, biohazard wasteland. The state's in trouble. We are financially in trouble. This homeless issue is going to get worse. I don't know what the solutions are. I have mercy for the homeless. I am willing to help my town any way I can. You have my name, my number, my email. We got to brainstorm, guys. We can't let this keep going on and on. We've seen Lodi. We've seen Sacramento. I hear everybody, or they love our town of Galt. You want to bring more people in. Who wants to come into Galt and see a wasteland of squatters and trash from the most beautiful drive possible, Lower Sac into Lodi, or Lower Sac into Galt? It's a problem, and we need to address it. I don't know how, but I'm here to help. Thank you.
Ruby, and I apologize, I can't read the last name.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ruby Cornejo. I have been a Galt resident for 31 years. I've always valued everything about this, this town had to offer. My kids went to school and graduated. I've never had to worry about my son going to the Boys and Girls Club after school until I got out of work. Although my kids are grown, I worry about our community's children. After 40 years of state service protecting the health and welfare of children and elderly, I find myself worried about our community. I have seen this town deteriorate in many ways. I've seen many people displaying mental incompetencies from yelling at the public simply walking the sidewalks to scaring people into the streets because they were too afraid to walk past them. People walk around exposing their private parts from urinating and defecating in our streets and sidewalks and putting out their tents and sleeping bags onto any part of our streets, parks, and parking lots, at Save Mart specifically. These individuals are feet away from our schools and have access to our children. This is not okay, and we must not be complacent in allowing this behavior to continue. Our children, elderly, and every person who lives in our community have a right to a safe and healthy environment. There are laws in place that allow our law enforcement to arrest these individuals for loitering and decent exposure and et cetera. There are a lot of penal code sections that are enforceable, and I think it's time that we take action and allow our law enforcement to arrest these individuals if they are unwilling to submit themselves to, you know, services that, and specifically Sacramento County has available. I actually brought today, I did my own research. I used to work for social services for over 30 years. And I did bring phone numbers, addresses of numerous locations that these individuals can get assistance from. Okay? Yes. And the Community Care Expansion Program, known as CCE, was established by Assembly Bill 172, Chapter 69, which provides 805 million in funding for those who are experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. The California Department of Social Services has a housing and homelessness program. They are responsible and have oversight of statewide housing programs, such as Project Room Key, provides many services. The Housing and Disability Advocacy Program for homeless and disabled provide outreach, case management, benefit assistance, and the Home Safe Program, which partners with Adult Protective Services for people who are experiencing homelessness due to many factors. And they provide housing-related assistance. I have also brought you a copy of that information as well. For me, I just, you know, people need to be properly assessed and provided with mental and addiction services. Sacramento has many services, and people can be taken to many places, such as like the Salvation Army. They have a Union Gospel Mission. They have the Comprehensive Alcohol Treatment Center, mental health support, and so forth. I have basically outlined numerous places where these individuals can go. What really, you know, brought me here is the other day, I was driving in the back part of Save Mart, and I saw a tent right behind bushes. And right next to that, there was a car with two males and a female who had their hood opened. And they had their trunk opened. Kids were just getting out of school. And for me, I was very concerned that, you know, one of these days, somebody's going to get kidnapped. To me, what I would like to ask all of you is to look over this list, basically give these homeless individuals the opportunity to, to get these services. And if they don't agree to that, then arrest them. Because there really isn't anything else we can do at this point. So all I'm asking is that you take a look at this and see if maybe there's a way where we could try to clean up this community. Because, you know, we relaxed our laws and rules for too long. And I think it's time to take our community back and clean it up. And that's what I'd like to see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rodney, and again, I'm sorry, I can't read the, I apologize.
Yeah, my name is Rodney Hillman, owner of Robinson's Taekwondo. Me and my wife own it. Today, we went, went out behind the building. Homeless guy there shit right out our back door. We're at 10434 Twin Cities Road. So we've been, this is actually our 20th year in business. We started out at 231 South Lincoln Way. Then we went to 807 C Street, and now we're right next door to Rayleigh's. The homeless is really bad. My wife has been, she cries to me about it. It's hard for her to go out the back door of the building when you have some guy there that you're like, hey, she doesn't know what's going to happen. Kids come out the back door. So we really need to do something about this. Just today, this morning, there was a guy sleeping at our back door. Somebody needs to do something about it. It's bad. My wife's always, hey, what are we going to do? I'm scared. So you guys need to do something about it. In the old days, when we were on Lincoln Way, our Grand Master, Master Green, used to train Chris Sanford, Galt PD. And we would, actually, he trained the Police Department. I'd call up the old Chris Sanford, all the old guys, hey, come on down. They would deal with it quickly, not like today. Today, it's different. I mean, in those days, you know, I don't know if you guys know Larry Moniz, the old drunk guy. He would be out in front of our place on Lincoln Way drinking. Hey, well, I'd call Chris Sanford, somebody, they'd come down, well, pour his beer out. We'd get rid of it quickly. Nowadays, nothing happens. Nothing. My wife cries to me, hey, what are we going to do? Do we need to move somewhere else? What do we do? So it really does need to be dealt with, the homeless. It's bad. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the comments. No more public comment?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a statement.
Sure.
I want to thank all the people that spoke on the, the issue of the homeless. And I want to take a couple of minutes to say some stuff right now. First, I want to thank, I do want to thank City Manager Hines and the Galt PD for their recent work in being very proactive to the concerns that have happened. I know that is a very difficult situation. Oftentimes, our PD feel like they have one hand behind, behind their back with current laws and policies in our justice system that make it difficult to, to mitigate this problem in a, in a way that we would like. So first, I would like to state, say, thank that, say that, Mr. Hines, thank you for that. And I want to thank you for our legal staff. Frank, I know we were talking about this just today. And there's been a lot of recent work with you and the chief and, and council behind the scenes. And not just recently, but over the last couple of years, we've done a lot of things behind the scenes to try to mitigate the issues that have been brought forward. But frankly, these people are right. I mean, this, I refuse to just tell people on a day-to-day basis that we just can't do anything more. We need to be reaching out to the county, if we have to call our county representatives, our new, our new supervisor, Pat Hume, or whoever else, our congressman, on a day-to-day basis and say, we need the resources, we need help to, to, to solve this. I personally, when I was the mayor, I had three interactions with homeless people. I had someone steal from my business, and then when I confronted them, I was threatened, and Galt PD arrived. Just a few days ago, I had one of them kick the door into my coffee shop and come in and start yelling and screaming. Brewster's Restaurant had their window broken out. I went to get my haircut today, and my barber had their window broken out by rocks. Now, whether or not those are transients or whoever, we can't say for sure. But I've had a lot of interaction with the people I hear, and I have, I do have sympathy for these people. I have family who have been homeless. I understand the challenge, the mental illness. I understand all the root causes. But what I would like to say is we cannot allow heartstrings to be pulled, to allow laws to be broken. And it is not fair that businesses in this town continue to suffer vandalism, continue to have people come into their businesses yelling and screaming and scaring their patrons. And I understand that we are working as hard as we can as a PD and as a city to do what we can. But we need to, we need to take this up a notch. And what I would ask is that tonight, that this council support me in directing our city manager to make this issue one of the top priorities in our city moving forward in this next year.
Sir, sir, no, respect, with respect. I mean, the comments are supposed to be brief, and what, what you're about to-
I'm not interacting with-
I know, and what, what you're about to propose-
I think as, I think as a member of the selected body, I have, I already to speak.
You do, but what you're about to propose is meant for council comments at the end.
Then I won't, then I'll say the direction, that I'd just like to continue making my comments-
Thank you.
Without direction. To have, to have our citizens feel unsafe and our business owners feel unsafe is just not acceptable. I was in Southern California a few days ago, and there was this, we were going in what I've considered a nice part of town, and the garbage and the trash and the tents and the camping was disgusting. And I saw that, and I said to my daughter I was with, I said, Galt will never look like that, ever. As long as I'm an elected official in this town, ever. And so I'm committed to doing whatever it takes, whatever we have to do with the county or the state or whatever, to take care of this. But, I mean, we have the city, we have the doors of City Hall locked because our, our own staff have had incidents with homeless coming in. So we feel you. We know what's going on. It, it's got to stop. I mean, I'm tired, I know it's the elephant in the room. We try to keep it kind of, but it, it's just, I'm tired of fielding phone calls every day and emails every day and people coming to my place of business talking to me about this almost every single day. So that's it.
And, Mr. Mayor, I think we have to probably just cut off with that comment because we can't get in a discussion amongst the council.
Agreed, agreed. That's, they're supposed to be brief comments, but I, I appreciate the passion, and you make great points. So if that's the end of public comment, yeah? Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, that was long. Now, now we'll move on to regular agenda items. The first one is I, reports from city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Mr. Papadou, or Vice Mayor, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend the January 12 Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting. That was the first meeting in this year, very short. And we selected Chair and Vice Mayor. Chair, we select Rich Desmonte, and Vice Chair, Eric Guerrero. He was the Sacramento City Council Member. And Rich Desmonte, he was the Sacramento County Supervisor. We also extend the Bell Number 361, allowing virtual meeting for one more month. And we go back to personal meeting back in March. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Papadou?
I have not had any meetings to report on.
Rich, why don't you go ahead while Sean comes back?
Yeah, just real briefly, have a SACOG Board Meeting this Thursday, and so I'll report back to that after, after our meeting. And then just wanted to make mention of a California League of Cities Policy Committee that I was appointed to. It's the Revenue and Taxation Committee. So it's a statewide committee that develops policy positions on issues of state revenue and taxation for California cities to lobby the legislature. The, it's concerned with finance, administration, taxation reform, revenue needs, revenue resources at the federal, state, and local levels. So hopefully, some of these ongoing state mandates that come down, we'll be able to address some of that. And so those, that meeting, those meetings are, meet quarterly beginning in the 27th of this month. So I'll report back out on that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Farmer?
I don't have anything to report.
Thank you, sir. I have nothing to report myself. Next item is J, Information Consent Calendar. It is recommended that Items 1 through 5 be acted on simultaneously unless separate discussion or, and/or action is requested by council members. We will be, we will need a motion from the, for the following items. First one, receive file warrants for period ending, ending January 5th through of 2023. Second, minutes of regular meeting, December 20th, 2022. Special meeting as well of January 9th, 2023. Update the city personnel manual, leave sections pursuant to AB 1041 and AB 1949, effective January 1st, 2023. Four, subject resolution supporting the Consumers Groundwater Authority to sustain a grant proposal for the Consumers Sub Basin on behalf of the GSA in the sub-basin. And five, Treasury Report for period ending November 2022. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, before making motion, can I make a comment? I will ask Mr. Hines on J, Item 1. I don't know, he read my email or Mr. Boering's email. I ask some warrant clarification. If you have it, otherwise, give- If you have it, otherwise, give it in the next meeting or-
We'll get you those, that information on those warrants tomorrow. Our finance director was assisting with a budget manager interview with another city.
Thank you, sir.
Public comment as well for this?
Thank you. Yeah, okay. Is there any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Or do I have, anybody want to pull on item?
A motion that we approve the items as proposed.
Have a first, is there a second? Second by Kevin, Mr. Papadou? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papno?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Next is Scheduled Matters of Notice of Public Hearing. A subject continuance of approval of final map subdivision improvements agreement and annexation of Territory Community Facilities District Number 2020-1. Public Service Annexation Number 7 Greenwood Cottages. A report from Mr. Sellings.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Mike Selling, Public Works Director. This item is a second continuance for the Greenwood Cottages, final map and Community Facilities District annexation. We were trying to get in contact with them with the schedule lead up to tonight's meeting, and since the staff report was submitted, we have had contact with them, and we are exploring some options as they are considering changing the development product type. So we're asking to continue this to the next council meeting, and we'll hope to have things, some questions answered and resolved by then, and possibly continue the CFD process at that time. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Selling, could you quickly just give me a teaser? What exactly are they, just briefly, what are they-
One of the things that they mentioned was basically kind of a rent-to-own potential possibility for the, for the home, single-family residences that they're, they're looking at for the elderly. So they're exploring that.
This is not a change to the actual product, like square footage or lot sizes?
No, no, everything stays the same. It's just would be, you know, if they're gonna sell these outright like a typical residential or it might be some kind of a lease-to-own type of situation.
Thanks.
What would be the approval process? Were there changes? Is that directly by the council, or does this go back to Planning Commission?
It would depend. What they're, they're hopeful to do is, and the attorney can, can probably assist too, but they have a six-month time clock that started when the, when the public hearing was scheduled back last fall. And so that clock will actually expire March 20th. So the, the CFD annexation hearing has to be held before that March 20th deadline. Otherwise, it expires, the process expires, and they would need to re-initiate it. And so there's a significant cost to doing that, you know, fees and staff time and everything. So they're looking at, you know, if they change, make this change, does that affect their final map and some technicalities like that? Or can we put some kind of a language in the subdivision improvement agreement that would essentially, you know, ensure that they're going to meet all their conditions, meaning annex into the Community Facilities District? So, so that's what we're working through, some of the, you know, I guess, technicalities and legalities as to how that might work, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Selling, just very quick, you know, the taking the extension, and when you're talking to them, your opinion is might be inflation or is the product they're gonna sell in the market?
Yeah, I, they didn't really say much more than that. I think, you know, obviously, that the housing market has changed, and so I think that they're probably, you know, crunching numbers as to what might be the most advantageous, you know, way that they can move their, their, their project forward, so. Thank you.
Mr. Selling, I just have a quick question on a statement you made a few minutes ago. When you said, when you were describing the rent or lease-to-own possibility, did you say for senior housing?
Yeah, this is a senior housing project.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mayor, I mean, sorry. Councilman Farmer, do you have any questions? Absolutely.
I'm okay, thanks.
I believe this, since we don't need a vote on this, all we need is a consensus to-
So, yeah, let me just, I'll be out a little bit just to clear, since we have to, you have to open the public hearing-
I thought this was a continuation, so we're not actually opening a hearing. That's the way it's written.
Yeah, you're right. We're gonna just continue, but you have to, you have to continue it to a date certain on February, on February 7th, and do not close the public hearing. So in other words, you just get a motion or consensus is fine to continue to February 7th, and don't gavel down, don't close the public hearing.
Okay.
And you still have to open up for public comment, just in case there's any comment on this.
Thank you for the reminder. Is there any public comment on this?
No public comment.
Thank you. So then, do we have a consensus to carry this to February 7th, I believe you said?
Yes.
Yes, 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 we have a consensus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now to regular calendar items, city manager's office, subject 2023 Cannabis Public Engagement
The City of Galt currently prohibits all commercial cannabis businesses, business activities, including retail sales. On May 3rd, council directed the city manager to schedule a discussion regarding the prohibition of cannabis retailers during the fall of 2022. On December 6th, the council received a presentation from HDL, our consultants for sales tax and property taxes. They're also experts in cannabis sales tax as well. They presented a presentation to the council, giving an overview of cannabis, the cannabis industry in the state of California, and what the implications would be for the City of Galt should it choose to go in that direction. On December 6th, after the presentation, the council directed me to bring back an item that contains an outreach and education plan to allow for public participation and input into this discussion. So on page two of three of the staff report, the Cannabis Public Engagement Plan provides multiple points of public education and interaction, specifically to gauge the community pulse on this issue. It also includes updating the prior survey results, which were done by a scientific research firm, utilization of the city's website and social media channels, also includes town hall public presentations, and engaging selected citizens and committees and commissions and community groups. And so I will go through the plan. So the first thing we'd like to do is update the FM3 community survey results. For the folks out in the audience, when we did all the back work, our back work, background work on Measure Q, we did a survey of Galt citizens, and we brought in a firm to do a scientific survey of Galt citizens' feelings on Measure Q. Be it a one cent, be it a half cent, do we make it a general tax? Do we make it a specific tax? And so we were able to get some really good input regarding Measure Q. And it turns out, the council, that, that firm's conclusions actually proved true with the passage of Measure Q. So we're very happy with that. Now, at the end of the Measure Q survey, we inserted a couple of questions regarding cannabis as we just wanted to get a feel for how folks were feeling about cannabis. And so I'll talk a little bit more about that later in this report. But we would like the opportunity now to do a survey that is specifically focused on cannabis and not doing it as a tail end for Measure Q. So that's what I propose here, and again, we'll talk a little bit more about that survey. So we have the survey results. We're gonna update the city website and social media and digital media vehicles and make sure we get the word out about this particular conversation. We want to develop informational sessions, including community presentations. Right now, I'm planning to do a town hall meeting on both sides of Galt and to get community feedback. We also plan on putting a public frequently asked questions on the website because we're trying to educate as well as getting input. I also want to, we're gonna present the updated community survey results to council once that's completed and post that on the city website. So that's good feedback, both, that's a scientist, that is scientific feedback for the council. We'll also be getting feedback informally from our town hall presentations and our social media interactions. I will also issue invitations to what I like to call the City Manager's Ad-Hoc Community Roundtable. And these are basically stakeholders in the community that tend to be sort of the leaders and the most vocal members of the community, and so I try to get all those folks together into one roundtable to give me a sense, an informal sense of how the folks here, how the folks are feeling about this particular issue. I'm also gonna engage selected committees and commissions. Basically, that's code for, I'm gonna select, I'm gonna engage pretty much all the committees and commissions except for the youth commission, because I'm worried about the optics of presenting this in, in front of the youth commission, which is made up of youngsters who legally can't handle these, these products. So it wouldn't do any good there, but I will be engaging all the other committees and commissions. I plan on bringing this item back in March and in May of 2023, and that's the plan as it stands right now. So just a word about the prior survey, and this is on page three of three of the staff report. So FM3 is a nationally recognized leader in conducting research. And so there, as I mentioned, they did the, the research for Measure Q. They've submitted a proposal to do another research engagement for us. The proposal's about 31,000, 31,000. They anticipate their sample size will be about 350 folks. They will, that, that, those dollars include the questionnaire design, translation, sample acquisition and preparation programming, contacting respondents through email, telephone, text as needed, English and Spanish language interviewing, data entry, analysis, and reporting. So these are the same level of activities and the same dollar threshold that we use for Measure Q. So essentially, we're, we're canvassing the community for another, for more input on what could be a potential measure for 2024. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that is my proposed plan. And again, I designed this so we'd had as many touchpoints with the public and as many folks in the public as possible.
Sure, we can have public comment.
Yes, Phyllis Johnson, thank you for the time. I realize this is early on, but I do have two main questions that, to be thought about at this time. Well, number one, I realize cannabis is, a lot of people rely on it to be healthy, and I understand that, and I sympathize with it, just like if you have a headache, you may want to take an aspirin. But my thing is, are you considering a dispensary here? That's number one. And if so, where? Because I personally don't want it in certain areas where certain parts of the population are. I don't want them exposed to it, like you mentioned, the youth. I don't want to buy a school. I don't want to buy a teen center. That's the way I feel.
There are state regulations that govern where these facilities can be located and where they can't be located.
Good evening, Mayor Vandenberg. It's nice to say that for the first time.
Thank you.
Councilmembers and city staff, thank you for coming out. Members of the community, before I start with my comments, I'd like to recognize the city and city council members that posted on social media the road conditions and flooding. I think that was very helpful for people. Social media is becoming quite the source of news, of first resort for a lot of people. So I was very happy to see timely updates from the city and then reposts from various council members. Very much appreciated, and I'd like to give you all a round of applause.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Councilmembers of the Bay of New York.
I sit tonight in support of a dispensary in the City of Galt. A lot of the work that Mr. Hines is talking about has been done for him by the city manager in the city of Ileton, which I believe is the closest city to us that has a dispensary. I could be wrong there, but I believe so. I know that his comments are, are in the Galt Herald, but I'd like to read them, and I'd like to thank the Galt Herald for putting this on the front page as well. I'd like to read his short comments, short quote into the record. They're asking him about the commercial side of cannabis and how it's causing major changes in Ileton. And his quote is, "We're getting our tax revenue, but there's more activity around town, too. There's more people at the restaurants, the workers are buying lunches, there's more demand for supplies, more activity on Main Street. A lot of the buildings that have been vacant in town now have activity. So that's commerce that's good financially for people, for jobs, for restaurants, for the city, and taxes. Whether they sell frisbees or cannabis, it's good for the town." My wife is working on a documentary right now called The City of Empty Parking Lots, and it's about the city of Galt. And unfortunately, it's true. You can drive around any day of the week, at any time of day, and what you see mostly are empty parking lots. I'd like to see, I'm having to kind of think on the fly because of the comments that were made earlier. One of the things is Frank's comment about this being a destination attraction. One of the things that cannabis dispensaries have done is become destinations for people who will actually rent a limousine, much the way they go around to the wineries and have a tour. Dispensaries are probably the safest business that I have ever been in. There's no other business that I can think of, including a bank, where you have to give your government-issued identification to an armed guard before you even walk through the door. So if you hear about crime and a bad element hanging around, please do your research and find out that that's not true. Dispensaries are clean, safe, they're beautiful inside, they have no trash. I've heard a lot of talk tonight about the homeless. There is no homelessness around a dispensary, none, zero. And I've been to lots of dispensaries. Where to locate it? In industrial park. Galt is supremely set up for the location of a dispensary. You want to boost the economy? There's a way to do it. I believe that 350 people is too small of a sample size. I'd like to see more. And I did my own very non-scientific research on this subject after the last- And I did my own very non-scientific research on this subject after the last time that I spoke here. I put up a poll in the People of Galt section. I got 95 responses to this simple question, "Do you support a clean, safe, well-regulated cannabis dispensary in Galt?" I realize it's non-scientific. Of my 95 responses, 83 were a hard yes, three were a soft yes based on where the tax money would go, and eight were a hard no. That's an 87.3% positive response. Thank you very much, I'm finished.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment?
Andrea Johnson.
I'm going to keep this short and sweet. I'm sure by everybody looking at me, I look like a normal person. Everybody always sees me with the big smile on my face, unless you're mean. But usually I have a nice smile on my face, and I'm always helping other people. What people don't know is this month, in six days, I will be 46 years old. Now, why do I bring that up? Because my life expectancy is 48, which a lot of people do not know. I have a rare condition called vascular Ehlers-Danlos syndrome. And so what that means is, I'm sure you guys saw me about four years ago looking like the sloth. Well, I had a brain aneurysm, and luckily, I survived with a 4% chance. Because I have vascular Ehlers-Danlos, I dislocate, I bruise, my body can contort and do all these fascinating things, but it also puts a lot of pressure on my veins, which will rupture at any minute. People with my syndrome only last to about 48. And because of that, I, because I had a craniotomy to get in there and put some metal in there, I have chronic insomnia. And I'm not talking about the insomnia that you guys have where, I wasn't even going to share this story because people don't know, a lot of people don't know this about me, but if I get two hours of sleep at night, it's a miracle. I also have lupus, rheumatoid arthritis and other autoimmune diseases. Because of that, my liver and my kidneys are shot. So therefore, sleeping pills is what I would have to take. And every time you swallow a pill, you can cut some time off my life. And so, for me, it's already here. You can get it delivered from Sacramento, you can get it delivered from Ileton, from Stockton. I think it would just make more sense to get that, the monies for it to use in our community. It's here, it's already here. And I do take a weed gummy at night to go to sleep, to get even those two hours of sleep, and then I'm right back up. So some days you might see me fatigued, maybe my smile's kind of shot a little, I probably didn't sleep good the night before. But I just would like everybody to understand there's two sides to everything. There's the people who need it for just to get a night's sleep, to get some, a little bit of relief from pain. And so I just would want not only you guys to think about that, but also the public to think about that. I'm one of the few that you don't look at and think, "I take it for medical reasons." Well, I do. And so there's a lot of us out there that we look fine, but we are not. So I just wanted to, I wasn't going to say anything tonight on the subject, but I thought it was a good time. So thank you very much.
Bravo.
Well, I oppose it. I truly believe that there is room medically for cannabis. Don't get me wrong, I was in the healthcare field. But gentlemen, we have a homeless crisis in this town. We do not need a cannabis dispensary in this town until we get what's cleaned up with drugs already in this town. And I hear so many wonderful things happening with our youth in this town. What message does that send a little Galt? My feelings about, you know, smoking pot, again, for medical reasons, no issues. But we've got all these other little community issues that need to be healed first before we bring a dispensary in that could potentially cause more harm than good.
Are there any more comments, public comments?
No more public comments.
Would council like to make any statements or have any questions?
I'd just like to say a couple of words, and I appreciate everybody making the comments on this subject. This is what we want. If, you know, over the course of this plan that City Manager Hines has rolled out, this plan for engagement, and I think it's a good plan, thank you for putting that together. I like the town hall forums especially, and I like the online, I like, you know, using all the different methods to try to get a good sampling. But, you know, I'd also encourage those of you that are on either side of this, you know, reach out to your council members. I've been, we've been getting emails for and against. I get them regularly. I get people text me, people phone call me and talk to me about it. And that's what we want, because we're your elected officials. So over the course of the next few months, or next couple of months as we do this, if you're in support of it, your voice needs to be heard. If you're against it, your voice needs to be heard. If you have friends that think this way, you are, we need to hear from everybody. Because this is, this is, this is not something we're going to take lightly, and we need to really understand the entire thing as a whole, not just looking at it through narrow lenses. So I appreciate the comments tonight and look forward to hearing from the community over the next couple of months on this. Thanks.
Mr. Lozano?
Yeah, I just want to thank city manager and staff for putting the plan together. I think the plan is good, it's comprehensive, really, really efficient with time. I too enjoy the community presentations and getting out in the community to have that synergy of conversation. And so I look forward to moving forward with this plan to see where the community lands. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, Mr. Pompano? Either? I'm just trying to...
I'll go first. No, I would echo Councilmember Lozano, and I definitely like the plan. I appreciate you guys taking the time to put it together and the commitment that you've now put on yourself to engage in all these things. And I specifically like the educational focus, so that as many people as will take the time to engage can learn what a dispensary is and what it is not. Because I think there's a lot of misconceptions on both sides, and there's a lot of examples statewide of, they vary, and people can learn what our ability is to basically restrict location and operation should we choose to, you know, should our voters choose to bring this to town. So it'll be a good, a good chance for engagement and a lot of education, as there's, like I say, a lot of misinformation on both sides. And I specifically like the scientific survey, because a lot of our engagements receive input from people that have strong opinions and they're very vocal about them. The scientific survey reaches people who won't be at those engagements, and I think it is the least of all susceptible to activism. So I like the plan, and I'm looking forward to seeing it go forward.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Just thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few comment on this plan. Thank you, Mr. Hines, you bring back whatever we ask you to bring. On this plan, you know, it's very much, I agree with the other council member, but there are a few things I'd like to attach on it. One thing is town hall meeting. If there, instead of three, if you can increase three to four, because I like to everybody be available on that. Because I'm very open-minded. My constituents supporting this, and my constituents also opposing. I want to hear from everybody what your opinion is, and I can make my decision. The other thing, you mentioned something, you're not going to involve the youth commissioner. I don't understand, but they have a youth mentor. If you make some kind of arrangement with the youth mentor to discuss that plan, I will really appreciate that. And that's all, I will go with that plan. I will make sure all my citizens get the opportunity. This is a big thing. And then also, there's revenue. My concern is not that much revenue, my concern is what will be the best for my citizens. We can make the revenue some other ways, but I want to make sure my citizens, my constituency feel happy and most of what they want. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. For myself, you know, I've spoken to officers that previously worked in Galt, officers outside of the city that work in Antioch. I've spoken to religious people and gone to dispensaries. I'm actually very pleased to see this move towards education first. As much as I've read and talked to people, I'm still really no closer than deciding about 51, 49%, and I'm not telling you which side I'm on. But, so I think education is very important, and if it's going to be a success, the citizens of Galt deserve that education. That's all I have. And I believe with this council comments, that satisfies the recommended actions?
Yeah, as long as there's a consensus of the, to approve the proposed plan.
Thank you. There will be an item on the next agenda, February 7th, to authorize the $31,000 for FM3, and also seeking an appropriation to fund that survey as well. If I can put it on the consent agenda, I will, I don't know if I can. So, but I'll talk with the city attorney about that, because essentially, we've discussed it here tonight.
Thank you. With that said, the next item is procurement policy update brought to us by Mr. Boring.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight's item is a continuation from the presentation that we did on December 20th to update the procurement policy. I'll try and keep it brief and not bore you too much with numbers. Our current procurement policy was adopted in 2012. It was last amended in 2014 to update our PO authorization limit to $1,000 from 500. Staff has identified several issues with the current policy that we discussed during last time, mainly the increased number in purchase orders required. There's over 100 purchase order, additional purchase orders in fiscal year 22 versus the prior fiscal year. And we discussed the decreased buying power due to inflation, and also talked about operational issues just in purchasing vehicles. Staff has compared our procurement authorization limits to other comparator agencies. Of the 12 agencies that we use, we identified the policy for nine. Two agencies had limits below the city of Galt, but those were also adopted near the same time or earlier than our current policy in 2012. One was 2013, and the other one was predated that. The overall average was 51,800 comparing all of the comparator agencies, and comparing the agencies that had limits in excess of Galt, the average was 62,600. And after analyzing all of that, staff has recommended increasing the overall staff authority for the procurement of goods and services to $70,000 from the current limit of 30,000. So department heads would have authorization up to 30,000, and city manager would have authorization up to 70,000. And we would increase the PO threshold up to 3,000 from the current $1,000 threshold. And there are some changes just in the dollar amounts reference for the public projects, but our current policy references the state code. So the, those dollar amounts wouldn't change, they just would be updated. But the other requirements, operating within the budget approved by council and other requirements of the policy would remain the same. So I'm available if you have any questions or...
Councilman Farmer?
Matt, tell me about the, I see your chart here with other cities and everything. Tell me about the competitive sealed process. Does the graph, the graph you have here showing that there are cities is, from my understanding, is, is, only has to do with city manager authority, but not with competitive sealed process?
Correct. We were comparing the total amount authorized to staff. Most of those, I don't have the information in front of me, but I do remember the ones I looked at often, that top staff threshold is the, where their authorization for sealed process begins. So typically, staff can get written quotes and make procurements based on that, and any dollar amount that exceeded the staff authorization would need like the competitive sealed process for goods or services, and then the public projects have their own separate workflows.
I mean, I do understand that the hindrance of having to do a sealed process, I mean, I get how that could definitely slow down and cause difficulty in getting, I guess, a good deal on the fly or whatever. But I also understand that the reason it's like that is because, you know, we want to make sure that we're using the tax dollars competitively, and we're not just exercising, you know, spending money with whoever we want for when we get into certain amounts of money. So anyways, just saying that, my feeling on that, I understand both sides, but I'll have some other comments, but I just want to, that's it for the moment. I'd like to hear from other council.
I would just like to add that we still have to get written quotes for up to that 70,000, so it's still, we're checking with multiple vendors, it's just not as strenuous and specified as the competitive sealed process. So it's not just, you know, I know a vendor, and if I can get them to issue me a quote for less than this, I can automatically go with them. There's still the need to get multiple quotes and ensure that we're using the revenue that the city receives the best as possible.
Yeah, but I've heard stories, I have friends who work in municipalities in other cities, and I hear some, I hear stories where, you know, there's a, there's a favorite vendor, and when it's not a sealed process, it's like, you know, who's to say that, being like, whoa, you know, these guys bid, you know, 32,000, if you can do it better than that, you know, and, I mean, you don't know what goes behind closed doors when it's not an official sealed process. So I just, I'm not saying that our staff's untrustworthy, but I just, I still have concerns with, with that kind of, you know, just free liberty to just do, you know, just call around and get prices. I don't know. So anyways, I'm not, I'm not against changing that particular thing, I'm just expressing my concern with the sealed process versus the, when it comes to certain amounts.
Anybody else?
I have a question. Does anything in these changes allow a department head or the city manager to spend any amount above what the council has allocated for them?
No, so by law, we're not allowed to spend more than what's approved in the budget. So that's, that's still one of the, aside from that just being a requirement, that's also listed in the procurement policy. So there's still, you know, department heads still have to endeavor to get the best value possible and remain within their budget.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Boring, give us a good report. You know, I'm agree on the report, there should be some kind of increased limit. But when you asking increase from $30,000 to $70,000 just for the city manager, let's go for the other is the same way. So you asking almost more than double, right? Maybe 125%, right? And on your report, you said the CPA, CPI increase only 30% from the 2014 to now. So that's, I'm talking, this is not with the alignment, you might have some other region, let me go in this region, so 30%, very difference between 100 and 25%. The second thing, you said, in a report, purchase order. Purchase order in back in 2020... Purchase order back in 2020 and 21 increase 21, 2022 is 20%. What you think, what by the reason it increase? Is it just the demand or due to because 2021, 20 was the COVID just came in? All the business was closed, including city. We don't do that many purchase order. Are you agree with that, right? So 2021 or 2022 is back to the COVID. We can do normal business. My thing is that 20% increase due to the COVID, not the 20%, just the process because we need more demand on the purchase order than 21 to 2022.
When I looked at the previous years, we didn't have a decrease due to COVID. A lot of the increase is just due to more and more purchases. Anything that we purchase that's more than $1,000 currently for goods and services, we're required to issue a purchase order. So the increase is due to just more of our purchases have crossed that $1,000 threshold now. Because comparing like COVID years to prior years before that, our purchase orders have steadily been increasing. That was just the easiest year to pull data that showed the current increase that we're experiencing.
Oh, you telling me back in 2019, if we look in 2019, is 2021 and 2022 do it increase the purchase order? You sure?
It's if it didn't increase, it was consistent. We didn't have a significant decrease due to COVID. They've been steadily increasing, and recently it's just more exponentially with the more recent inflation that we've been experiencing.
Yeah, it might be increased, but I, my thinking is maybe not 20% because there is effect. 2019, I'm certainly there was more demand than 2020 when the COVID came in. It's certainly less demand. My next question is, how many purchase orders you have in year back in 2022?
How many total purchase orders?
Yeah.
I believe there was a little over 500 in fiscal year 2022.
And how many purchase order you have the purchase of a vehicle?
Purchase orders for vehicles?
Yeah.
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
Ever since from year to year, based on our replacement schedule?
Right, but I'm talking about the maybe in a purchase order, maybe one or 2% the whole purchase order is in order to buy the vehicle. But you mentioned most likely we increasing that limit because we have to buy the vehicle. But vehicle is not the whole thing. You know, there is a purchase order we doing from A to B. There are a lot of things involved on that. So I'm just, I'm just saying the reasonable from 30,000 to 70,000, there is certainly need to increase. That's I'm agree with that. But certainly there from 30,000 to 70,000, same thing from $10,000 to $30,000 is because this is general fund money. This is all these people's citizens' money. This is not something I don't trust. I trust my staff more than everything else, but we have to some kind of safeguard on that. So that's so far this is my comment. Let me give the opportunity to other my colleagues.
Mr. Mayor, can I respond to that? I just wanted to, forgive me, Matt. I tried to stay quiet over here. So Vice Mayor Sandu, I understand all of your points. But given the rise, and you mentioned vehicles earlier, I don't think we can get a police vehicle for under 50 right now. So if the PD needs a vehicle, we've got to go through a process, and we now have to bring that one vehicle to council to get authority. Now, the 50 is just for the vehicle. We're not talking about the light kit or any of the other things that go in the car. So we're just talking the vehicle. And so, and there's also the decals and all the things that they have to do to get those, get that vehicle ready to go. To have the authority to just get that vehicle in play, first of all, to order the vehicle because right now they're a year out. And if I'm misstating this, chief, let me know. Right now, they're a year out, and when we finally do find one, because there is a shortage, there is, we're trying to avoid the two-week delay of we got to get it in front of council. We got to get approval, and there's a possibility that that vehicle's gone by the time we're done. I'm not saying that happens all the time, but we're, that's the times that we're in. And these changes in the procurement limits, as was mentioned earlier, the bottom line appropriation that council approves is in law. No one's avoiding that and no one's exceeding that unless we come back to you with a proposal to exceed it. And we only do that twice a year. So what we're looking for is flexibility within that authority. That's all. That's all. But I use the police vehicle as an example. Public Works also has a number of vehicles that are very expensive. And so that's, that's why, you know, we went through the lengths we went through to come up with the number that we thought was defendable. That's, that's all. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Hines.
Sure.
You know, we increasing not this limit just for the vehicle. We increasing the limit for all of them. That's kind of my question is, but due to the vehicle, we have to increase all other limit. The other thing is just, if we need something, it is over the budget. How long it can take? Usually request go to you, then it's come to the council, right?
If it exceeds my authority.
Right. And the council, we have every other week, we have a meeting. And all these five people, we are elected to give our time, big commitment for the citizen. I'm talking, I know it can be a little bit process. It can a little bit, but that's not kind of, we cannot do it. So every other week, we have a meeting. And then I, it's same thing. My comments in the beginning, I'm agree with that. Limit need to be increased. But I don't know why we will be agree with the other heard other comment. It increasing from 100% or more than 100%. Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this topic?
Yes, Phyllis Johnson. First of all, I'd like to thank the gentleman for a very, very thorough presentation for me who didn't know doodly before it. That's number one. Thank you. But my question is, okay, the gentleman across from me. I don't have his job, but I would want a clarification on the purchasing. For instance, you just mentioned vehicles, but there would have to be some kind of limitation of what kind of purchases we're talking about under your authorization. For instance, you may want to buy five buses, let's say, okay, for transportation that's needed. Then how much of that, 70,000 goes for the five buses? And if we need three more, what then? So the purchases, in my mind, have to be more direct, not just a general purchase authority, which you are, but it has to be more explicit. It's true, COVID has cost all of us, no matter what your income is or what your outlay is. But would be different from a COVID year to the year before. The year before, no offense, we were all more productive than when COVID hit. And I'm going to use a dirty word. Please forgive me. Crappy COVID hit everyone. Whether you had it or not, you were affected by it. Income, health wise, whatever, you're affected. I for one, I belong to a couple of organizations, and it's true because the room rental, we didn't have to pay for it. We didn't use the room. We went hybrid later on when we could have in-person, but you still have your video and all that. That would require extra equipment. That's an example of a necessary purchase that could not have been done before. And that's why I'm bringing it up as an example. And for instance, our very great purchaser here, I think should have a limit as to what kind of equipment we're talking about and what money would be for that versus other. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity, council, to speak on this matter. I picked up on the exact same thing Paul did on tripling. To me, it makes not a whole lot of sense. Now, I have total faith in Mr. Hines over here on $70,000 credit line, to be frank with you. Because if he goes and blows $70,000 on something, you five guys in the city are going to hold him accountable. 30,000 on a department head, eh, to me, we're kind of still tripling it. I'd feel more comfortable in the 2025, but 30 is a number. I don't see a department head going, doing something stupid. Where I see someone possibly doing something stupid is on the lower purchases. One of my dad's things was always watch the pennies, the dollars take care of themselves. We see a big expenditure going out, we're always watching it. We hold ourselves accountable for it. Where we blow the money is the nickels and the dimes and the quarters that we spend. So I do have a bigger problem on bumping that $1,000 to $3,000, in my opinion. Just wanted to voice that, but thank you, Paul, for picking up on the triple too.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, fellow council members, for your comments.
We have one more.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Harry Wenzel?
How could I think you would not pass up this opportunity? I'll be redundant. Harry Wenzel. Thank you, council members, and thank you, fellow citizens, for all the comments tonight. This is an area that I had quite a bit of experience in. I managed a purchasing department for a while, and I was also in a position where I had to look at a lot of the purchase orders and what was being done in accounts payable. So I feel for Mr. Boring too. He's got to check off the boxes and so forth. Anyway, what I found is that PO is no magic. You're going to check off those boxes, and you're going to have too many of them. We had thousands of them. Sometimes we have a thousand in a week. You couldn't sign them all that fast. And I think everybody's points are real good. I know we probably need to do something with the limits. Mr. Sandu is, put something there. But stepping back, this transparency issue is very important. So I'll give you an example. We have the council voted that Mr. Hines would take care of playground structures. And you also mentioned optics tonight. I trust Mr. Hines, but I trust him also to bring, it's something when you walk by a playground structure, I don't know, that works out to $160,000 a playground structure. And citizens are going to wonder, so what did we do? Now, I trust he'll do something there where citizens can see what he did. So, and I understand Mr. Brosman and the frustrations that goes around this, but I think that where, what we need to do is we need to use the judgment. Staff needs to use the judgment and council needs to use the judgment. Where you need to highlight the transparency so that the citizens have a, you know, they have the confidence that their staff is doing the right thing out there. They're not getting together with their buddies or, you know, just making, just being lazy. And this is a problem. Corporations have it. Government has it. It tends to get highlighted. Somebody picks up on it, and they say, wow, they're just wasting the money. But I will give you a good story, and I know that, you know, you need to, you probably need to address. And I think Mr. Boring's given a good compelling reasons, and you guys have to decide that. But I'll tell you a good story. I was at Ace Hardware about four months ago, and there was a city employee buying a number of items. And he started to walk out the door, and he came back and he said, "I don't remember that item," and he laid his, he laid his stuff down on the counter. And they had, and they took off like $11,000. Small item, but a big deal to the public. So I just give you that good story, but this is a hard subject, so good luck. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, sir. I think, I like, thank you for the public comments. I think my fellow council members bring up the key points and concerns. Myself, I think this actually used way overdue coming to city council. I'm surprised it was, it lasted that long. And I think it should be set at a manner that would help it go into the future. Not for too long, but I find it, personally, I find it acceptable. I, you know, we talk about vehicles and there's measure R, and every time we have a council meeting, we have, what's the term they use for checks?
Warrants and...
Warrants. Thank you. You know, so there is a lot of accountability that, you know, you guys can read if you want every time an agenda packet is put out. You're quite welcome. It's a public document, and everybody can read it, you know? I go through them often. They're stale and dry, and sometimes I ask questions. So with that, if there's no other person, you have, go ahead.
I have additional comment. I kind of agree with, I do agree that there should be some changes. I mean, we've obviously seen the increases in the CPIs and everything. I did note that the staff report did say there was a 20% increase in purchase orders. It did say that, so I don't know if that's accurate. But, but if you take the 30% CPI jump and you take some of these numbers, you know, as Vice Mayor said, we're not looking at a request for 30%. We're looking at a request for, you know, in some cases, 300%. Like, we're asking to go from 1,000 to 3,000. We're looking to go over 100% on city manager approval. I mean, if we look at the graph that was given and you throw out the high and the low, and then you take the average of all the rest, which is how I do averages, you come up with about 50,000 as an average when you're talking about the city manager. You know, currently it's 30,000. You're asking for 70. Well, I come up with 75 would then be the high and 25 would be the low. If you throw out the high, the low, that gives you 50. If you throw out both highs and both lows to even get it down or even further down, you end up with a 30 as low and 60 as a high, which leaves you at 45, so you're still close to 50. I would be, I would be okay with making a compromise here and going with something in the middle, like on the particular city manager, if we go to 50 from 30. And on the 1,000 to 3,000, going with like 2,000. So kind of meeting in the middle. So we're definitely going above the 30%, which I think is very fair because 30%, if that is really the CPI jump, I feel like we're being generous and going beyond that. But I think there were some good points made by the public tonight about transparency. It's not just about trust. It's about transparency that we as council members were elected to approve things. Now, I know we can say, well, we approved $70,000 for the purchase of a patrol car, and it's in the budget. And what you guys are saying is, look, you already gave us the authority to buy that car. We just don't want to have to come back to a council meeting for you to have to approve that. We want to just be able to go out and buy it. But budgets are set at certain times and things change throughout the year. And maybe when you come to us to buy that car, maybe at that point, we don't think it's a good wise decision at that point, or we don't like the particular purchase in general because of, I don't know. I mean, there's been purchases we've made in the past where I asked what we're going to do with the old one. I mean, I, there was a discussion about buying a bucket truck for 100 and some odd thousand dollars, and I was told we were going to get 2,000 for the used one. After later discussion, that the council member found out the staff actually was able to go out and get, you know, a significant amount more than that, only because we raised concerns about it. That's the concerns that I have. It's not about buying the money. It's, it's about the other little details that surround some of these purchases. And a purchase of a car or vehicle is a big purchase. That's not just buying paper clips. I mean, and as often as that comes to us, I mean, I understand we can miss a bargain, but, you know, from my four years in this job, I've noticed that, you know, we, you know, more times than missing bargains, we don't, you know, do our due diligence with, on the backend and get recouped for things. And as my father once told me, it's not what you make, it's what you spend. And I think that's very important. And so we are here to, we are tasked with the authority and by our taxpayers to watch the expenditures. Now, putting on a warrant that's got 200 on there, I understand, Mr. Mayor, but people aren't going to look at that. But there's a car coming across. I think the people of this community had deserve a right to sit in a council meeting if they like. if they liked to, and hear the ins and outs of what that car is and that vehicle, and, and hear the deliberation, and see the process unfold about purchasing that. So to cut this short, I agree more with the Vice Mayor. I'm willing to, I'm willing to up the limits. I think it's due, but not, and not in the respects that being requested. I would like to see something more in the middle.
Okay, to, to ask a quick question. You mentioned two items, 70 to 50,000, from three down to 2,000, but did you not mention a change in the 30,000 for department heads?
Yeah, the, the request for department heads is from what to what? I don't, my screen just went dark on me.
From 10,000 to 30,000?
Yeah, so I would be comfortable with 20, meet in the middle. I'd be, pretty much meet in the middle on everything. I mean, give or take.
Okay. Then I would ask, you know, this was brought up, Police Chief, if you could please, you know, this was brought up before about vehicles, and if, if this was suggestion were to be taken on, how would that affect your purchaseability?
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
I've also got our Parks Director and our Public Works Director, who are ready to provide testimony to you all regarding this, the impacts of this policy as well. So we can start.
That would be, I would appreciate that. I would want that. If you could, you know, give us actual examples, that would be helpful, perhaps.
Okay, great.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So it partially addresses some of the issues we have. I think we need to be mindful that the price of vehicles is over $50,000. And so, as I whispered into the city manager's ear, and I don't know if this is workable for other departments, is there are competitively bid items. Every patrol car that I buy, a marked patrol car I buy is competitively bid through the state of California. I don't have a dealership in Galt, so I can't leverage sort of a better deal based on sales tax, or, you know, within 5% of the margin, like the purchasing policy allows us to do for purchases. So I'm stuck to the state bid, which is competitively bid for patrol cars, passenger vehicles, the whole lot. If, if the number lands at that 50, I would just ask that there be an exemption that allows us to move on state bid vehicles to the dollar figure of, of a higher amount. And this year, it looks like it's going to be about $55,000 for a Ford SUV, you know, and I would really hate to be here next year when it goes up even more. We know we kind of chase our tail. So I gave the example, you asked for real-world examples. The unmarked Dodge Chargers were $32,000 in 2019. They're now $44,000. And so that is a $12,000 increase, which is about a 38% increase, which is above the CPI. And again, that's on a state bid program. So for me, in my department, if I could use state bid for police radios, we do with Motorola as an example, or, or the vehicles, if the total exceeds that 50,000, that could work for me. I don't do a lot of services-based work where, you know, I'm getting consultants and things, so I can't speak to that, those kind of items. That's where we're at, because, and then the one thing I want to mention, because somebody was talking about the frequency of council meetings. We have a, Tina and Rose often remind us of our deadlines for council agenda items. So there's about a week or nine days before the actual, tonight's council meeting, my packet has to be on the fly through the process, or it's not going to make the agenda. So if something came up, for example, last Friday, I would not have been able to make this agenda. I wouldn't make the agenda until February 7th, as an example. So there are, yes, you guys meet frequently, and we, and we move through the, the work that we do, but these one-offs strain the system, and we just can't pivot fast enough. And if we don't have a meeting and different things like that, that does expand the timeline. And I know that those are only examples, but those are things that we faced in the, in the chase of this. Really comes down to supply chain issues, right, that we're trying to address. So those are my real-world examples and things we've dealt with. So I just want that to you.
Thank you, sir.
So let's see if we can get Director Selling up.
Good evening, and Council. I just give you a couple of examples, real quick, from public works side. So you've probably seen on recent agendas where we've been needing to come in for an amendment to a consultant services agreement for them to do, say, a plan check review or something like that, in the neighborhood of 35, 50, $60,000, those kinds of things. And so just, you know, as, as the chief just kind of touched on, just the workload, and, and, you know, we could be spending our time doing other things on behalf of the city, but preparing, you know, council packages and stuff for things that are pretty straightforward like that, are efficiencies that we could gain by upping these limits. Another example from our side would be if we have a pump or something, you know, mechanical failure in, in one of our water well sites, or, or the treatment plant or something. These parts get pretty expensive pretty quickly. And so upping these limits to not only just meet, you know, or, you know, wherever you end up tonight, as far as what the limits are, but obviously, anything that kind of gets us to the point where these are the real-world costs, you know, and it's not just as simple sometimes as what has the inflation been, or what has the CPI done. The market is the market sometimes, especially on some of these specialty items. And so they don't necessarily go by those nice straight-line, you know, increases. So those are the kinds of things that will gain us the efficiency and time, and, you know, and, and some savings, obviously, too, not spending time on preparing items for those. And I know you've, you've all got, you know, other things that may be more important to you than some of these routine things. So I think that would be something that would gain efficiency for, for the city as a whole. So those are a couple of just quick examples from our side. Thank you.
All right. Parks Director Armando Solis.
While Mr. Solis comes up, can I have, ask Mr. Splendario a question, just throwing this out there before we have further just topic, but would it be possible for us to put something in there where we could deem certain authorities under what we would call an emergency? Because I, I understand the pump situation. I, I know that's kind of a, I mean, I understand the chief's.
Yeah, yeah, there are, actually is emergency purchasing authority already in the, in the purchasing policy.
And a pump for a well or something going out, that would definitely be an emergency.
Yeah, it just depends on the situation, but it very well could be, yeah.
Sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Solis.
So basically, what the chief and Mike have said is, is true. I mean, we, we have these issues, takes a lot of time. We're writing a lot of purchase orders. There, there's things that Mr. Brosman said, you guys, there is checks and balances where you can say, Lorenzo, you approve this in certain matters. You guys have approved the budget already, and you can hold him accountable. Real-world situation that I had in our budget, five years ago, I could have ordered a truck, got a PO issued, have you guys approve it, and then I could have bought that truck, sent that PO in. Right now, I can't do that. I had $70,000 in my budget to buy a truck I can't get. So what did we do? In Parks and Rec, we pivot. We tried to figure out, what can we do? Okay, we're going to buy two smaller trucks at about $32,000 each, get two of them, okay? It will fit our needs for what we need now, because I need vehicles to get around it. I couldn't go out and buy a $32,000 car or truck, very small, small truck, because I had to come here. So the dealer, not in the fleet, but on the retail side, I will match that fleet price. So, which means I could have did the purchase order without having to get three quotes, but he wanted us to sign the contract right now, and it would have took three weeks for me to come to you to get a contract, or for you to approve that truck to be, to be bought. Trucks are gone now. I can't get one. So if, if it had been set at, at even 35, I could have got one truck. If you had kept it at 70, like it's being recommended, I could have got both trucks. When it had to come here, you still would have saw what it cost me. You still would have saw that purchase. You still had the opportunity to discipline Lorenzo for approving it if you thought he did something wrong. I mean, but, but you were talking checks and balances, but, and that's what I'm telling you, is that it's frustrating on my part when I can't spend $32,000 on a vehicle that you've already approved. It, it's just...
And I do, and I do understand what you're saying, but we're not just here just to look at stuff after the fact. I mean, if you wanted, if we were, if our job was just to look at everything after you guys did it, we might as well just post everything to the city website so that people can see it, and why have a council? Sometimes we need to be here in the front of the decision and not after the decision. I'm just simply saying, there's a bigger discussion here about that this is not your money, it's not my money, it belongs to taxpayers' money, and sometimes we need to be involved in this decision-making process. A lot of what I'm hearing tonight from examples is vehicles and vehicles, vehicles. But how often do those happen? I mean, we've purchased like maybe nine or 10 vehicles in the five years that I've been on council, and all of those are usually done at one shot. Most of them were, and then a few were done separate. You mentioned a vehicle five years ago, you gave me an example. I mean, I get that those examples exist, and I understand that, but I just, you guys are wanting us to change the status quo for small snapshots in time that, that don't, are not regularly, regular occurrences. That's my only concern here tonight.
Mr. Lozano?
Yeah, I just have a question for the Finance Director. If, can you explain, because I'm, I'm getting a little confused. We've talked a lot about CPI, Consumer Price Index increases. How does that relate to inflation, real-world spending? Like, it's published every year, right, the CPI? And so how does that match with, over time, say, 10-year period, the rate of inflation and the actual dollar value?
So CPI is often used as the measure of inflation. It's, there's different ways to calculate it. The one we referenced is that they, essentially, they, you know, you take a basket of goods, and you go to the grocery store, and you buy these 10 items, and it kind of looks at their price over time. So there are certain things that fluctuate significantly, like fuel prices fluctuate a lot from year to year, even, you know, month to month. So it doesn't include items that have high fluctuation. It's more consistent items that everyone buys, and it's a measure of those prices over time. So CPI is just one example of the thing that's challenging us. So, for example, we, in the staff report, it, it was either in the staff report or the prior presentation, the same $30,000 that we're authorized to procure with today is equivalent to, you know, less than $23,000 of $20,20, $12. So if, if, so what, if I heard what you're saying correctly, if I heard it correctly, that CPI is the difference over time, is it up to date, I guess I would ask? So if I wanted to buy a gallon of milk tomorrow, the CPI that was released, whenever it was, I don't even know when it is released. I believe the CPI we referenced was released in November of 2022, and that was the most recent CPI.
Okay.
And it's kind of used as a general term. It's not saying, you know, the cost for every item is going to increase this much. That's the, the basket of goods that the economists use to determine it. There are certain things, you know, like the Police Chief was saying, you know, the price for one of their unmarked police vehicles increased 30% in one year. So the, the car price, I don't believe, is included in CPI. So there are other market factors, driving prices higher in excess of CPI. So that was just one of, it's, it's an easily obtainable statistic that we included to, to show the impact of inflation on the procurement policy. But there are several other factors increasing costs.
Such as market rate?
Mm-hmm. Market demand.
And, and like, real-world inflation, like, one day you're paying $6 for a gallon of gas, and the next day you're paying 550 or whatever. Okay, thanks.
The example you gave, Mr. Boring, 20, that sounds reasonable. 30,000 buys now 23. But again, that's 30%. And I'm only suggesting that we give you guys actually 40, I'm actually, I'm actually, so what am I, actually suggesting 50%? Actually, no, I'm more, actually 100. If I'm saying go from 1,000 to 2,000, that's 100% increase. I'm just not wanting to go 300% increase, or in the city manager's case, from 30 to 70. You know, I'm okay with 50. I mean, we're giving you, I agree with the 30%. I, I agree with your stats, and, and I'm willing to do that, actually, plus some. I think, well, I think what I'm proposing is fair.
I, again, the, the CPI is just one stat, so that's not the only thing driving prices. And the 3,000 is, we looked at the number of POs that we issued and the dollar amount. So that would reduce the, the number of POs to a more manageable number, so it's easier for workload-wise. And the POs that we issue, we can more thoroughly examine, because when you have so many, I know, especially at the beginning of the year, or if I take a couple of days off, I'll have 10 requisitions in the system that I need to look at that are emergency. So you don't have the amount of time to dedicate to reviewing everything.
You know, it was mentioned about the, you know, holding Mr. Hines accountable for something we're not happy with. Well, the problem is, if we see a warrant come across us, and I see that warrant, and I go, hey, what's this, this warrant for this amount? And then the staff gets back to me, says, oh, that was for a car we bought for blah, blah, blah. I mean, for some reason, if I, I wasn't happy with that purchase or whatever, holding the city count, the, the city manager accountable means what? I just go to him and say, hey, I wasn't very happy about what you did. But it's done, it's a done deal. There's no going back. He could just say, point taken, and that's the end of it. There's a reason why these checks and balances are in front sometimes and not behind. I'm only simply saying that these amounts are, I get that it's been a while since we updated them, but you guys are not asking us for like a 25% or 40%. You're not even asking us for 50. There isn't a number I've been given in here that's not less than 100%, at least 125%, I think is the smallest one. So...
We've also picked the numbers. We haven't really done a comprehensive review of the procurement policy for 10 years. So for workload-wise, it's something we're trying to not bring back every year. So with this threshold, this should facilitate operations for several years, so it's not a recurring, every year, we need to increase our limit. I mean, I, I know there are several other policies that I need to work on and bring back to, to get adopted. So every time we do this, it, it's a big workload. So these are the recommended limits that will facilitate operations for several fiscal years.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate it. And I, and I, I appreciate the report and everything. I just, for me, for me tonight, gentlemen, for my fellow, I'm, I'm not comfortable with going over the 50%, or not the 50, but the numbers that I, that I examined. I mean, there's five of us, and if the council feels as a body that we think we want to give that to you, then that's the way it'll end up. But for me, it's going to be only what I, what I suggested. That's all I'm comfortable with tonight. Thank you, Mr. Boring.
No, I'd like to make a comment, and I think Councilmember Farmer made that assessment very reasonable, on recent craze. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other council comments, I guess...
Just real, real quick, the specific examples that we've been given by each director falls above Councilmember Farmer's recommended numbers. So we're really not making any progress. They still have to come back and delay and cause inefficiencies for the city. So I'm, for reasons previously stated, comfortable with their proposed numbers and our ability to oversee that and keep them within budget. I think, you know, if we're going to not address the problems, the specific examples that they've given, then, you know, we're fine with just leaving it as is.
So if that is the end to council comments, I guess I would be looking to adopt a resolution approving a revised procurement procedure policy, increasing the purchase authority of the city manager to 70,000, department heads to 30,000, and purchase order threshold requirements to 3,000. Do I have a motion? Did I say that wrong?
This is...
Adopt a resolution? What did I do wrong?
No, that's, that's right. It would be adopting a resolution to, to approve that...
You need a motion, right?
Proposed, yes.
I have no motion?
Go moved.
Moved by Councilman Papinell? Do I have a second?
I'll second. I just thought you were making the motion, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll second.
I'd like to make an ulterior motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve for city council, or for city manager, to 55,000 from 30. Staff to 2,000 from 1,000. And what was the third one?
30,000 for department heads?
It was going from 10 to 30 on department heads, is what they suggested. So I would like to offer 20,000 on that one. So the only one that's a little higher is the 55 for the city manager, keeping in mind that he does have authority for emergency situations already.
So, Mr. Farmer, you said 50,000, 2,000, and 20,000?
55,000, 2,000.
Okay, so Mr. Farmers would like to adopt a resolution approving revision procurement procedure policy, increasing the purchase authority of the city manager to 55,000, department heads to 20,000, and a purchase order threshold requirement to 2,000. Do I have a, a motion for that?
Can, can I add a clarification real quick?
Sure.
Our city attorney would like me to clarify. We are also changing the, the thresholds for the, the competitive processes to align with those thresholds. So there's an increase of the oral quote procedure up to $10,000, and the written quote between 30 to 70,000.
Does that cause a legal conundrum for us, because it's not written on the, on the...
No, it doesn't, because the...
Because the resolution adopts the policy which includes all those changes. The title of the resolution was just getting at the big ticket changes. But for clarification, what the director is asking is, you also have increases as relates to the oral quote procedure, the written quote procedure, and the competitive seal process. So besides who gets to purchase how much, do you want to change? You're going to have to have some kind of adjustment to that procedure. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
So as it stands, because it was not specified, both proposed resolutions would have the existing stamp, the items you mentioned as presented?
Yeah, I mean, if, if.
You're just making us aware of it.
Yes, your resolution, you're adopting the policy as presented. Councilmember Farmer's adopted the resolution with the amendments that he mentioned only. It wouldn't change the oral quote or written quote or competitive seal process. I just wanted to make that.
Yeah, thank you. With that, my motion, yes.
Thank you for bringing that up. Do I have a motion? You're making that motion. It's moved by Mayor Councilman Farmer. Is there a second?
I'm going to do a second.
Second by Vice Mayor Sandu. There's no other motions? Then I have a roll call vote on the second item?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
No.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
No.
Mayor Vandenberg?
No. Now can I have a roll call vote on the original resolution?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
No.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Nope.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye, motion passes three to two. Okay. Now to item M, Communications.
None this evening.
No, we're not that far yet.
Oh, that's.
That was procurement policies and next is M.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm just reading the next.
Apologize, Mayor. I thought we skipped, I thought the communications was to the end.
That's okay.
My apologies, I don't have the agenda in front of me.
That's, that's fine.
Your show, I'm sorry.
Normally it is.
Yeah, okay, so Communications?
None this evening.
And City Clerk's report.
So tonight, we'll receive a presentation, review the Committee Commission Board Handbook and receive direction from City Council to consider appointments or reappointments to vacant positions on local committees, commissions, and boards. The Galt Municipal Code established the process by which a person is appointed to each committee, commission, or board. Each council member shall appoint one person whose term shall run concurrently with that of the council member so appointing. As a result of the reorganization, Vice Mayor Sandu, Councilmember Farmer, and Councilmember Lozano each have appointments. Councilmember Papino has one appointment on the Galt Youth Commission due to a resignation and there are also appointments to be made by the entire city council. So first, we'll start off with a presentation by city manager.
Councilmembers, I realize this might be slightly redundant for some of you, but I wanted to get on the record a presentation that lays out the roles and responsibilities of the committees and commissions that report up to the council. I don't have a clicker, so. So the roles here for the committees and commissions are to advise the council on policy that assists the council in carrying out their responsibility. Thank you, sir. And also provide citizen input by being positive representatives of the council and the community. So we'll start with the Beautification Committee. Acts as an advisory committee to the city council and makes recommendations on projects designed to maintain and improve the appearance of the public areas of the city. This group also endeavors to recognize the efforts of residents and businesses within the city who've demonstrated exceptional efforts to improve the beauty of our city. The staff liaison for this particular committee is our Community Development Director, Craig Hoffman. The Commission on Aging, which we heard from the illustrious Bob Balier earlier. The Commission on Aging acts as a forum for any matters of concern to senior citizens of the city, subject to the direction and approval of the council to engage activities, including co-sponsoring community forums on topics of interest or concern to senior citizens, assist in the dissemination of information about the availability of services and activities for seniors, and making recommendations regarding funding of programs for senior citizens. The staff liaison to the Commission on Aging is Armando Solis, our Parks and Recreation Director. Committee recommends, or Historic Preservation Advisory Committee. And so this committee recommends to the council the designation of cultural resources, including individual properties and historical preservation districts, reviews and comments on land use, redevelopment, and municipal improvement and other planning matters. Also makes recommendations to the council on the use of various federal, state, and local and private funding sources available to promote cultural resources in the city. Lastly, they review and make recommendations on applications for site plans, review of the compliance with Chapter Four of the Downtown Revitalization and Historic Preservation Specific Plan when requested by the planning director. Staff liaison is again Craig Hoffman, our Community Development Director. Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee. So this committee was established to monitor the expenditures of revenue collected pursuant to the special transaction and use tax ordinance for police services and to report to the people and the city council. This group also conducts annual review of expenditures of revenue collected pursuant to the ordinance, determine whether such funds were expended for the purpose specified and the original legislation. Staff liaison is the police chief. Parks and Recreation Commission. The Commission acts as an advisory capacity to the city council, makes recommendations to the city council on policy matters concerning parks and recreation issues. They also promote and represent the interests of the entire community relating to parks and recreation facilities and programs and services. They help keep the residents of the community informed of all of the parks and recreation facilities, programs, and again, services. The liaison, as you may have guessed, is the Parks and Recreation Director, Armando Solis. Planning Commission. And this commission reviews matters related to planning and development to make recommendations on goals and policies affecting the future development and growth of the city and to consider land use matters such as general plan amendments, specific plans, rezoning, and use permits and subdivisions. Powers and duties are set forth in state planning law and the staff liaison is the Community Development Director, Craig Hoffman. Public Safety Committee. This committee acts as an advisory committee to the city council and evaluates any public safety issues within the community brought to the communities or committees' attention by the council, city staff, or residents, and makes recommendations to the council. The committee confines its business to general public safety issues and the liaison is the police chief, Chief Kalanowski. Galt Youth Commission. The Commission collaborates with city departments, community businesses, and nonprofit organizations on matters pertaining to programs and activities for teens, encourages youth to participate in the activities that are purposeful in building civic unity. The Commission shall receive and evaluate input from the community on issues relevant to teen program, serve as a resource and advocate to the city council on teen issues, and perform such other functions as may be assigned to the Commission by the city council. Staff liaison is the Assistant City Clerk, Tina Hubert. And that, Mr. Mayor, is an overview of the committees and commissions.
Okay, so before we get started, just a reminder, on February 19th, 2019, City Council adopted Ordinance 2019-01, allowing up to two members to reside outside of the city limits but within the Galt Joint Union High School District, except for Measure R. So for the Beautification Committee, there's three vacancies. Vice Mayor Sandu, Councilmember Farmer, and Councilmember Lozano each have an appointment and we received two applications, Gail Weber and Olivia Del Grande. I'll just go in order and Vice Mayor Sandu, your appointment?
Madam Clerk, could I, could I ask that if, if one of the applicants would like to speak on their behalf?
Some are here, some are not.
Okay, but I would like to give them that opportunity. Thank you.
Gail Weber and Olivia Del Grande. You're going to table? Councilmember Farmer?
I will appoint Mr. Grande.
And Councilmember Lozano?
I would like to appoint Gail Weber.
On the Commission on Aging, there are three vacancies. Vice Mayor Sandu, Councilmember Farmer, and Councilmember Lozano each have an appointment. There were five applications received. Phyllis Johnson, Robert Wilson, Libby Robbins, Joan Werblen, and Lori St. Clair. Councilmember Farmer?
Would like to reappoint Libby Robbins.
Councilmember Lozano?
I would like to just make a comment. I think it's amazing that we had five applicants for this commission. It's a very active commission and I was telling one of my colleagues, I wish I could have two appointments because there were so many good qualified candidates. But I've been happy with the communication from my current appointment and I'd like to continue him, Bob Wilson.
Next, we have the Galt Youth Commission. There are four vacancies. Vice Mayor Sandu, Councilmember Farmer, Councilmember Lozano, and Councilmember Papino has a vacancy due to a resignation. As mentioned, there were four vacancies and one application was received from Jessica Gorzen.
I'm going to table mine.
Councilmember Papino?
I'd like to appoint Ms. Gorzen.
And with the remaining vacancies on any of these committee commissions, we will readvertise starting tomorrow. On Parks and Recreation Commission, there are three vacancies. Vice Mayor Sandu, Councilmember Farmer, and Councilmember Lozano. Applications received were from Ernest Kason, Carrie Graham, Erin Saldivar, and Atelio Avalos.
I would like to point, I would like to repoint Carrie Graham.
Councilmember Farmer?
I would like to reappoint Erin Saldivar.
Councilmember Lozano?
I would like to reappoint Erin Kason.
The Planning Commission, we have three vacancies. Vice Mayor Sandu, Councilmember Farmer, and Councilmember Lozano. Applications received were from Carrie Graham, Daniel Gurline, Jeff Hood, and Bonnie Rodriguez. Councilmember Sandu, Vice Mayor Sandu?
I would like to repoint Dan Gurline.
Councilmember Farmer?
I would like to appoint Bonnie Rodriguez.
Councilmember Lozano?
I'd like to reappoint Jeff Hood.
Public Safety Committee, again, three vacancies. Vice Mayor Sandu, Councilmember Farmer, and Councilmember Lozano. Three vacancies and two applications were received from Tim Reed and Chris Shamber.
I will table mine.
I believe Mr. Reed would like to speak.
Yes, there is a public comment, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and everyone else. It's been a great pleasure serving you guys the last two years on the Public Safety Committee. That's why I put in my application again. We did some good work and I'd like to keep doing that. But also being on the Public Safety Committee and this being the committee section and all of the public comment that was said tonight, I really urge the city council to look at the possibility of having a committee on homelessness or something along those lines, or it being a subcommittee of the Public Safety Committee. I'm not really sure how that works. But I think that there are a lot of people, I know we have a problem filling some of our vacancies for our committees. But with all the public comment that were, that were said, we need to give the people a chance to put their money where their mouth is and make a committee that addresses that situation and let these people step forward and try to help us solve that problem. But back to the public safety, I'm here. I really want to do a good job for the city of Galt and that's it.
So Vice Mayor Sandu, you tabled your appointment. Councilmember Farmer?
I would like to reappoint Tim Reed.
Councilmember Lozano?
I'd like to reappoint Chris Shamber.
The other two committees are appointments by the entire city council and we can make one motion for both appointments. Historical Preservation Advisory Committee, there are three vacancies and we received one application from Kenneth Dougdale. And the Sacramento Yellow Mosquito and Vector Control District, we received one application from Marcia Mooney.
I make a motion to appoint both of those individuals.
Is there a second? Motion by Councilman Farmer, second by Councilman Papinow?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. That's the last one?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Comments by staff?
We're going to start with Community Development Director Craig Hoffman to see if he has any comments for the group.
Members of the council, thank you for the appointments. We're going to have a busy 2023, so it's great to get these commissions and committees back up to speed. We do have several items that are going to be coming before you in the upcoming months. I know we're going to be doing a, an SB 9 lot split ordinance. That's required by our housing element. And I think in about few months, you're going to be seeing Site 18. It was one of the general plan amendment and rezones that we had to do with the housing element. So unfortunately, you're going to be busy doing land use this year. I know you don't want to, but you will, I know. So look forward to a busy 2023. And that's it for me.
Good evening, council. Just have a few things for you guys. First of all, I'd like to thank my staff for working so hard during the storms, getting the city cleaned, getting a lot of trees cleaned up. Couple other things that came with that storm is we opened up the Red Cross Shelter at Shabola Center this weekend. We had to displace some people, some of our classes and programs. And we're going to have to continue that as FEMA has designated the Shabola Center as a service center and they will be processing claims starting tomorrow. We signed that contract with them, so we're moving some classes around. So if you hear some rumblings about having to move classes or, or programs around to different buildings, that's one of the reasons. We felt that there was a priority to get these claim center in and going. They estimate a one to two week timeframe, depending on how many claims they're getting. So do you have any questions about any of that?
You answered it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Director Solis, did you want to also mention that the Red Cross did set up?
Uh, Director Solis, did you want to also mention that the Red Cross did set up?
Yeah, I did.
You did? Okay, my apologies.
All right. Let's go with, uh, Director Mike Seling.
Evening again, council. Uh, just a couple of quick things. I know probably a lot of people are monitoring the road conditions and whatnot with the flooding, and, uh, Ninety-nine, uh, still remains closed, uh, south of Galt, so there are, you know, alternate, uh, roadways. I would encourage people to use, whether it's Google or, or Waze or one of the, uh, route findings, uh, apps, uh, to get there. There's no estimated time of opening, uh, still from Caltrans on that, so, uh, just caution people and take, take your time, and, uh, don't, uh, don't protrude into water that, uh, you don't know. So, um, follow the signs, don't disobey and go around them. It's for your own safety. So just like to encourage folks on that, and, uh, check your, you know, state and county, uh, websites for road closures to get the latest information before you leave, so. Uh, the other thing that, uh, as Armando noted, I'd also like to thank, uh, the Public Works staff, uh, for all their efforts, uh, through the storm, and I know, uh, uh, both Parks and, and Public Works staff, uh, worked, uh, very cooperatively to address all the, uh, the flooding issues and the trees, as he noted, and, and just various other, uh, you know, uh, issues that came up. Um, I think Galt was very fortunate. We, we had, uh, you know, several significant large trees fall near the library in City Hall here, in fact, and, uh, and we were very fortunate not to have any, uh, structural damage, so. So that was, uh, that was good, and, and I know it was a tough decision, but in all sincerity, I want to thank the council, uh, on the procurement item tonight, because I, I, I think that it's going to save a significant amount of staff time, and it'll allow you to focus on probably, you know, more important things. Not that these procurement things aren't, but a lot of goods and services, you know, that, that get done, uh, will be able to be processed much more efficiently. And, and again, from our standpoint, I didn't, uh, clarify it really well, but on the development side particularly, a lot of these, uh, things are paid for by development fees, so it will really, uh, facilitate efforts. So I thank you for that, and, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Chief Kalanowski?
Good evening again, Mayor and councilmembers. So I feel like I've aged ten years since the last council meeting due to all the storm and weather activity.
The, the walk shows it a little.
Yeah, it's a flare-up of gout, if you would like to know my medical conditions, but nonetheless. Um, my office is a comfortable place to sleep in. We determined that over the last several weeks, and I do want to, um, echo the efforts made on behalf of all members of the Police Department that modified their schedules, went to twelve-hour schedules, came off of twelve-hour schedules, um, and all the things that ebb and flow in emergencies. Everybody did it with, uh, at least no complaint to me. Not suggesting there weren't some complaints, but they didn't reach my level, and everybody worked hard, um, and put in some long hours, and so I do appreciate that. I think that says something about the health of the organization. Um, with that, uh, this week, um, our staff, there's a number of events we're attending, um, on behalf, what we did for Kevin Ton, um, on Sunday, the ten-year event, and so I appreciate the mayor and council for being there. Um, I think it was a well-received event. I know the Tons were very happy with, uh, the event we put on publicly and when we met up at the cemetery at eight AM on Sunday, so that was, um, that was nice to do. Um, and I know it was very tough for some folks, but now we moved into, um, honoring Ty Lenahan, who was, um, an officer here in Galt before he went up to Elk Grove, and as you know, he was struck and killed by a DUI driver on his way to work on his police motorcycle. Nonetheless, today, they did a banner unveiling and the freeway sign unveiling for Ty, and so we had an opportunity to go up there, and there are a number of events, private and public, that, um, our membership or our team will participate in over the next several days, leading up to his one-year anniversary on Saturday. So our heart goes out to Elk Grove Police Department. Um, lastly, I probably have more than that, but it's all I can remember right now. Um, we had the case of the hit-and-run driver where Angel Renteria was struck by the DUI driver. Um, that case settled pre-prelim, which means it did not go to prelim, and the driver of that vehicle, um, pled guilty. So now they're going to the sentencing phase. I know that sometimes the wheels of justice go slow, but I think it's a testament to the DA's office, the crime lab, um, and the work of our staff to put together a case that they wouldn't even go through this perfunctory, uh, preliminary hearing just to see what it was all about. They pled on the front end, so, um, kudos to all those people that were involved. There was a lot of effort to, um, make that go and, uh, secure a guilty verdict, but I did want to update you on that because that happened, uh, this morning, so. I believe that's all. I have one more item, and then on the, um, I apologize, on February... Excuse me. When it doesn't work, it doesn't work. Hold on a second here, I apologize. We have our upcoming, um, award ceremony that is going to be on February, um, sixteenth, two PM, at the Littleton Center here, and so invitations will be going out in the next week. That's our next project that the team is working on, and so it'll be, uh, honoring our Officer of the Year dispatcher, the Year Professional Staff, and some heroic efforts, uh, by the staff over the last year, in addition to recognizing, formally recognizing Sergeant Walton for his retirement from the city of Galt. So, uh, you'll get an invitation for that, but I wanted you to get that on, on your calendars early. Again, that's Thursday, February sixteenth, two PM at the Littleton Center. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, I, Chief, I have a question for you. I'm sorry, just since you mentioned about Ty Lenahan. Um, do you have an update for me, and I apologize, and Natoli now that he's outgoing, but I know there was some active discussion going on with, with, um, county supervisors, with you guys, I'm sure, and also with the mayor of Elk Grove, about, um, the process of getting the overpass named after Officer Graywall? Are you familiar with that process?
Yeah, and, yes, um, that topic and other topics, and it seems like we had an in with Caltrans where that was going to happen a little more smooth through the family. Um, but we just had a conversation about that tonight, um, after the Elk Grove, um, ceremony. So we have some work to do with our, um, new state legislator for the district and see if we can't push it, um, politically versus, you know, sort of professionally through.
Seems like there's a lot of support from.
Oh, absolutely.
Whatever, so, great, thank you.
Yeah, you know, I know there's been talk about that, and they've got a lot of plans in the works, um, for that, so.
Thanks.
And I know we've identified streets for naming locally too, by the way, for both, uh, Arminder and then, um, still Forton, because that development is not gone. So there are still local streets to be named on that behalf.
Mr. Splendario, um, curiosity, is the lady allowed to speak? Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
And next up? And, uh, Director Boring?
Good evening. I just wanted to give everyone a fair warning to brace for a February full of numbers. Our, our finance staff has been very busy, so, uh, we should have the mid-year budget update, I believe, coming at the end of February, and we'll bring our, uh, GFOA Budget Award plaque that we were awarded, our first ever, to show off. Uh, and we're working to finalize our fiscal year twenty-two audit, and we're, we expect that to be, uh, finalized early February, so we're going to try and get that, uh, presented to you at the end of February also.
Very good. Thank you, thank you. Make sure to bring that budget award. It's our first ever, huh? Can't wait to show that off. Um, I think we got everybody. Um, City Attorney Splendario? City Clerk Hubert? Okay. I wanted to take a minute, and while everyone thanks their staff, and I do appreciate the staff. We, we, we did a heroic, heroic efforts over the past three weeks. Um, I also wanted to thank that group in the back. Um, I, uh, no, I, I may have pushed some relationships, um, because of the wee hours of the morning where texts were flying around, where we're trying to keep people informed, letting me know what roads are flooded, where roads are closed, who's working in which area, and then sort of filtering that so I can get it into council's purview. So when your constituents are asking questions, we tried to make sure we had that information for you. So gentlemen, thank you, and also Amy Mendez, who's listening, um, and the rest of the staff. Well done. And, um, I am so proud to be part of this group, um, just a heroic effort. And, uh, I'll put this group, I'll put this team up against any, any city in the, in the region. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is there was some conversation about the unhoused issues at the shopping centers, and so I've asked, uh, my staff, uh, to reach out to the owners of both major shopping centers that we have here in Galt, uh, for a meeting with myself. And so I want to discuss these things with them, so I want the council to know that, um, we've taken, uh, proactive steps during this council meeting, uh, to, to make this happen. Uh, the other thing is, we were talking about procurement earlier, and we were talking about emergency authority. So I will be bringing a document to you that, that will lay out, because we're all about transparency here, that will lay out all of the, um, procurement and expenditures that I authorize, uh, for the storm. And so I think there's a sizable amount for tree removal, and so, um, and I, I think that's probably the biggest expense. Armando, is it, was, yeah? Probably the biggest expense, so, and staff time, so I'll be bringing that to you all just so you can see, you know, what I approved, and so you can, you can, uh, critique my decision-making at that time, but I thought all of these things were necessary at the time. And I do hope that the updates we provided to council during, uh, this weather pattern were sufficient to keep you and your constituents informed.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate all the updates you provided us, I do. Comments by city council members, uh, future agenda items? Uh, Vice Mayor Sandu?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first of all, thank you for all the staff giving us a good report, and I also like to thank you for all the department for last three weeks. Flooding, they are out there. I see public works stuck out there every street. I see the police officer was out there taking care of the safety. I know the electricity went out, there was everywhere. Thank you, Chief, and your, and your staff. I also like to thank you for the public comment. Today, we have a lot of public comments, and that's my concern, and I believe all my colleagues also be concerned too. Homelessness, chamber, and all, uh, other comment. I really appreciate to come to the podium to give this comment. I also like to thank you, uh, with citizens watching, uh, the meeting. Uh, beyond that, I did attend a couple of events. I attended the Galt Chamber Honorary Business Event for D-two trailers. Congratulations to them. We are happy to have your continued support here in Galt. I attended, uh, the new county supervisor, whom will be representing our area, Pat Hume, is the newly elected fifth district supervisor. I trust that he will continue to follow in Natoli's footprint and keep Galt as a priority. I look forward to working with him. I also attended the grand opening Locenta, including my fellow and lot of staffs. Uh, Mr. Patel also on the day in next to that. I'm happy that he expanded his business in our city. The hotel looks great. Thank you for your vested interest in the city of Galt. And lastly, I was sorry I cannot attend, uh, the Kevin Ton's due to some other schedule issue, due to some other thing. Thank you, that's all, Mayor.
Councilman Papano?
I'll redundantly commend the staff, top to bottom, on their, uh, response to the storm, and power outages and so forth, um, and not only the communication to update us, which was greatly appreciated, but, um, to, you know, proactively update, uh, social media and what have you, uh, to the community on conditions, so. Uh, I won't go on any, anymore about that. Um, and the Kevin Ton Memorial was, uh, totally appropriate and well-done, and it was great to see, in spite of the weather and conditions, a, a great turnout, so. Um, excellent, excellent work on that. And I usually have the inside information, but I didn't know that the case pled. However, now I can, uh, I've passed it along privately, but I can say publicly now, uh, from the inside where I work, um, when that was going through and there was a lot of impatience on the outside, and knowing what was going on, on the inside, that it was being handled, um, they were, the charging attorney specifically was very, uh, uh, complimentary of the investigation and the handling, so. Hats off to that. And I don't, uh, know that it needs to be done, but if the, uh, city manager would like to talk with the chamber about the ideas that they put up, I think that'd probably be a good idea. And I don't know that needs to be a, a formal direction.
I have a meeting already set up with them, and I look forward to reading their very detailed proposals.
Somehow I knew that.
All right.
I, I support that as well.
I don't have anything else.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilman Farmer?
Um, uh, is, is there a meeting? What date is that meeting set up with the chamber?
I don't know. It's on my calendar. I just saw it, accepted it today.
Okay, I just want to be sure. I wanted to echo that, that I want to make sure that you did meet with them, and.
Yeah, it's already on my calendar.
All right, I look forward to hearing the information back from that. Um, just some quick thank yous, just to kind of echo. Thank you, guys, Public Works, PD, of course, first responders who are not represented here, but, um, Armando, your team, all the staff. I mean, everybody had a hand, everything from, you know, uh, PD out there in the middle of the night when trees are blocking roads and, and all that was pretty crazy, um, uh, to, you know, Public Works pivoting quickly with the sandbag stuff, which people are, you know, calling me, saying, I'm here, and there's no sandbags, and, and thank you, Mr. City Manager, for quickly and saying, oh, they'll be, they're all working on it now, and then I would send people back over. I appreciate the updates. They were good. Um, and I was out of town during the worst of it for two days, so, um, I appreciate that. And, uh, Amy Mendez for the social media updates, keeping everybody posted, what was going on, so thank you, everybody. I, I would have to say that I expected the flooding in town to be worse than it was, so kudos to Public Works for, um, from the last time, I remember they were out there, you know, in knee-deep water, getting the drains, but it seemed like there was a lot of proactive work ahead, because I don't think it was as bad as it was, which it could have been a lot worse, so good, good job to everybody for that. I think we actually came out of this a lot better than we could have, uh, except for the trees, of course, but I think we dodged some bullets with the trees, too. Could have had some buildings hit out here, but we didn't, so. Um, and, uh, just a couple of housekeeping things. Thank you, uh, for sitting with the meeting with the chamber. I would also like, i- if it's possible, I, I, I am concerned with what was brought up about the Commission on Aging, the language being a lot different than the Youth Commission. These are both commissions, both, you know, in my opinion, there to advocate for their pertinent, uh, demographic, and I think that the language is very inconsistent, and I think we need to really get that resolved, uh, whether it's changing one or changing the other or whatever, but it's definitely, uh, is an issue, and I, I think we need to look at that. And then lastly, uh, as a future agenda item, I know, maybe just go without saying, thank you, Mr. Heinz, for mentioning about, um, proactively working through the middle of the meeting here with getting some things set up with the shopping centers, but I just, I just wanted to, to just see if, you know, I can echo with my fellow council members that, that this, this unhoused issue has, has culminated into this evening's meeting. I know it's been a couple, two, three years, kind of worked to this point, and not to undermine all the efforts that we've made and the staff has made. We all know what we've done, but I really want to just see if there's a consensus here that we need to really emphasize that this is a, is a, is a, is a huge priority. Not that it's not a priority of some what, but I, it needs to be treated with the utmost, um, priority, and I hope that my council would agree with me on that. I don't know what, but if it takes, you know, I've got a new supervisor coming in, you know, Mr. Hume ran on that, as, as, you know, homelessness is a, is an issue. We need to be leaning on the county like heavily, right? What resources do they have? I mean, do we have to go above him and go to the state? But if we need tools, we need to look for them. I know we're using almost every tool we have in the shed right now, but we, the bar needs to be higher. So I just wanted to throw it out there.
Councilman Farmer, I, I, in principle, agree with both of the things you brought up, uh, but as a, as a practical matter or a legal matter, I don't hear you stating a specific item. I mean, homelessness is a priority, but that doesn't, to me, in my mind, that doesn't give the staff a direction to move, because it's already a priority, you know? I, I've mentioned, uh, maybe adjusting our, our city code and, and that sort of thing, so I'm, I'm not hearing enough. Catch, correct me if I'm wrong.
Let me, yeah, I'll just jump into, this item is really just for future agenda items, so with that being said, is there something that you want us to propose for staff or a future council agenda item? Or, you know, that's where I think the mayor's driving at.
Yeah, I mean, it would be helpful if we could get, you know, some sort of, I think what's been happening so far is, and again, lately, really good responding, PD's response, city manager's response to when the complaints, but what's happening is, I feel like we're being reactive and not proactive. I mean, it's been being quickly to react, but, I mean, it took a business owner going to social media before we like became, we kind of kicked it up a notch. I don't, I'm growing leery of hearing from people day-to-day, and I feel like sometimes we're like, it's a day-to-day thing.
If I may, so could I get support from my fellow council members to have the city look at what we can do in changing our city code and reviewing, you know, what is legally possible, and perhaps also look at educating the citizens and business owners so that when they have a problem, they know where and when and who to go to, so it can be taken care of as proactively and as legally as possible, because I realize for the, for police, it sometimes can be a touchy problem for, you know, like, just because you know something happens, doesn't mean you get to arrest someone, so that's, you know, that's, excuse my overreach there, but, so do I have support for that from my fellow council
Yeah, absolutely, and I think that it is, as best that we can do this, and I don't know, like mechanically how it would happen, but, you know, homelessness is certainly an issue in our city, and we heard that very clearly tonight, and, you know, I've been out walking and talking to businesses, and they're as grown, as frustrated as you heard tonight, and they weren't here. And so, but it's certainly also a county-wide, statewide issue. I would argue that it's an issue in most other jurisdictions throughout our country. So I don't know that we're going to solve it here, but what, I think what the mayor's asking is very reasonable in that, what can we do here? I would love to see an agenda item of what we can do here to effectively be as proactive as we can, and I agree, you know, people do not, you know, I'm as compassionate as the next person, but that shouldn't, folks that are having difficulty or choose to be unhoused don't have the right to impede the welfare of our citizens and certainly our businesses. So I would, I would support an agenda item with information coming back on what we can do, where we're at in our code, and what we can do moving forward here locally, and then, and maybe that's engaging our county representative and our state representative as well.
And if I could include what we have done, too, I think one thing is, the public's perception is maybe we haven't done anything, and I think there's been, you know, a lot of efforts by PD, a lot of efforts on the legal side, and I understand that some of those may not, you know, it's a delicate ground, but I just think that there is, I would like to see, I would like to see, like, here's what we've done so far, here's what we're actively doing, and here's some ideas moving forward. Also, maybe some updates about, you know, I know we're supposed to be getting like some kind of counseling, counselors being, you know, allocated to us, and I know we're kind of in a waiting queue on that, I think, last time chief told me, but I'd like updates on that, where's that whole program? I mean, I was part of the homeless council, which you now serve on, Mr. Mayor, they were, you know, oh, yeah, we're going to deploy counselors down with you guys to deal with, you know, and we haven't seen any of that yet, so where are we at with that? I mean, we need to start squeaking up the tree, so I appreciate, I do support everything, thank you.
Okay, I think we got the direction.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm sensing a consensus from at least three I've seen.
Okay, thank you, sir. That was one item, and you mentioned something before the homeless item, I don't want to pass it up.
No, I think that covers it.
Okay, great, I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, the Commission on Aging that I just would like to, we need to visit the language on that. I know that there's been some discussion, but we literally have two commissions, one youth, one aging, that have, one talks about avocation, blah, blah, and then we have another commission that's being told, "You guys are not advocates, and you can't have that in your mission statement, it's completely hypocrisy," and we need to sort it out.
I would also support that, even though I do see the two advocacy's in a different avenue. One is more of a legal avenue, and the other is more of, you know, activity, I'll say for lack of a better word. So I do support the idea, I don't disagree with having a discussion, I think it would be healthy for us and the Commission on Aging, especially to touch on the legal aspects of it and how it could harm the city and/or help the citizens. So I fully support you, I just wanted to put that in there. Is there?
Yeah, and I wouldn't have known it wasn't there because Bob and Andrew have done a heck of a job. So, I mean, seriously.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Or things that have affected, especially through the, you know, past three-plus years of, you know, the things that have affected them, so, you know, certainly willing to talk about actually putting it in there, because they've been doing it anyway.
Thank you.
That's all I had, just, everybody, you know, hopefully enjoy the sunshine we got coming, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I want to just start out by thanking certainly the staff today for putting all the reports together very, very thorough, and then also the public for coming out and the public comment. It's refreshing to have people in the audience telling us what they want, and so that's good stuff. I wanted to specifically thank our first responders, police and fire, for their action during the last couple of weeks of storms. Some of the folks that don't get noticed are State Office of Emergency Services, who are working around the clock to make things happen, as well as our County Office of Emergency Services, and then local and city staff as well. I did want to make a comment about our newly-elected representatives at the State House and certainly at the county. During this, during the beginning parts of this storm, and when all the damage was getting ready to happen right at New Year's, I did receive communication from all three of them asking if we were okay and saying, "If you need anything, let us know." And so I think, you know, we have a different, different representatives for Galt, and it's very positive, and I think that moving forward, that those relationships are going to be strong so that we can help our citizens and help our city. The last three weeks, four weeks has been crazy with different events, I just want to point out a couple. The swearing-in of Councilmember Papadell's new boss, our new DA, Tenho, and Supervisor Pat Hume, we were, a few of us were able to attend those, and that was, those were really well-done, and it's good to see fresh faces and old faces at the same time. And then, as important, the opening of our new hotel in town, Locenta, we were able to go to that and, and celebrate with them, kind of a long dream, I think Ray had, so it was very nice. And I will leave it at that, but everybody have a good evening, and hopefully you, your property is well-maintained and now that the storms are passing, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. I was able to attend Donna Toldi's party, it was quite nice and well-deserved, as well as Tenho's swearing-in. It was more than I expected pleasantly. I'm really glad he got elected, I think he'll, he is, I've been talking to the man, he is very sharp, and I think his attitude toward the problems, addressing problems our society has is spot-on. I'd like to thank the police department for letting me say a few words at the Daffodil Tones Memorial, it was very nice, if that can, you know, in a sad event, I guess, but it was, it was good. As far as the storms, you know, I'd really like to thank the fire department, police department, all of Public Works, you know, the city staff, even the public citizens, there's, if you watch on social media, there's, you know, people helping out other people, pulling people out, cutting trees away, even clearing roads a little bit on Woodson, you know, when I go to work, just somebody came out and took a tree off so at least traffic could flow, so it's really nice to live in a city that works this well together. And my condolences to the, I believe, three people that passed away, it's never a pleasant thing, but it, someone posted how they were stuck on Dillard Road, and they thought it was only, you know, a foot and a half deep, so they thought they could get out of their car after they called 911 and walked to higher ground, and they almost killed themselves. They were grasping at tree branches and limbs, and they were quite thankful that they were found after a while, so just stay in your car, it's big and heavy, and it'll help you For the, on the public comment, there was mention of the sports fields, you know, so I was curious if my fellow council members, you know, would agree with me that, is it possible some of the younger children could play on some of the smaller parks to help expand some of the sports without doing undue work or excessive work? Not that you can or can't, just something to look into that might help alleviate the problem.
I, if it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, I would like the opportunity to look into the person's comments and report back to the council.
That would be excellent.
Give all, make sure you all have context.
Yep. And, yeah, that's, I wonder, I can't imagine how many calls the city got, you know, in the past three weeks, and not everything went beautiful, but it sure was nice the way it all worked out. So with all that said, we bring the meeting to an end at 9:42 p.m. Have a good day, everyone.